I like hammering this to Commissioner Weaver. Good morning, Carroll County. It's Commissioner Ed Rothstein. For our Thursday open session, we have a good agenda this morning and we'll be breaking for lunch and then reopening at thirteen, at one o'clock this afternoon. As always, let's start with the pledge of allegiance and then continue to keep those in harm's way, in your thoughts and prayers, those that are challenged with the virus. I ask that we continue. We're getting to know somebody very directly amongst us. You know, a family friend that's always, you know, now going through this pandemic. And give courage to those that are making the right decisions down in DC in preparation for the inauguration happening next week, as there are about 20,000 deployed into the Capitol right now in preparation for this. With that said, let's stand for the pledge.
This conference will now be recorded.
I just have a feeling it's gonna be a long couple of weeks. Okay, let's start with priority Carroll and let's start with Commissioner Boucher, District Four.
Thank you, President Rothstein. Mr. Swam, do you have any of the photos or videos of the tree planting up here? We have on Tuesday, I went out, well, here, we'll do the roads first. Check this out. This is Mr. Swam's handiwork on the gravel road treatment on Bethel Road. Now I went out and took an inspected. There's three different treatments right now. Kathy Burks and Jim Cook, I think, are reviewing the effectiveness of the three different processes that are in place. This is very important to not only my district, but Commissioner Lance is more so because we have the two most amounts of gravel roads in our district, especially Mr. Lance's. And as far as I know, I think they're preparing a report at the moment. They're reviewing it and they'll be getting back to us and we'll bring that information to the public to discuss because a lot of our constituents keep calling, asking us about the status of this, especially as we go through the winter. I think the winter damages the roads the most and I think that's where our staff are reviewing and analyzing which of the three processes will be the most economical and the most efficient. So, Mr. Swam, thank you on that. The second thing is the tree planting. We have the photos of the tree planting off Gillis Falls Road. I was, here we go. This is amazing. I went out there on Tuesday, went for a hike, practicing the ultimate social distancing out there in the middle of nowhere, it looks like. But it's absolutely gorgeous out there. This is in the flood plain of the Gillis Falls Park area off Gillis Falls Road. Went out for a walk, seen a couple deer, even seen a flock of turkeys. It's absolutely gorgeous. Right now, the tubes are the little seedlings or saplings, I guess they're called, the trees and the tubes protect the trees from being consumed by the whitetail deer because they pretty much wipe out everything, especially during the winter. It's beautiful. I'm looking forward to all those trees growing up and that helps us with our stormwater management. The vegetation helps absorb some of the water and reduces the erosion and the contamination of possibly the bay, which is their objective with this. So, thank you very much and appreciate Mr. Swam having those videos and photos up. Thank you.
Great. Appreciate that insight. Commissioner Fraser.
Thank you, Ed. A couple of things. First thing, I had a NACO meeting for energy, environment and land use. And mostly the meeting talked about how other counties across the country were handling the pandemic. And what was brought up time and time again is that we're all in a state of emergency, but it's not the same as a regular state of emergency after a tornado or flood or something like that because those events happen and then you clean up the aftermath. This is an ongoing event and so things have to be handled differently in different, different counties across the country or, you know, are just looking at it a little different and handling it. And it was, it was interesting conversation and it is nice to sometimes hear from a county in Texas who gets the water from the Rio Grande and the county in Colorado who does it. It's just the different things, different perspectives of what's going on. So, that was an interesting conference call. And then I went to the TA, Transit Advisory Council meeting. Since the new routes have been put in, even with COVID, ridership is up, which is a really good thing. People are looking at the 30-minute wait times and ridership is up. They don't really want to make a big deal about it right now because, of course, you don't want to overflow the buses because of COVID, but it is a very, very positive sign, really is. Also, I went to, I was on the opioid, I can't remember what was it, we had tax force I was on, but one of those calls the other day. And the interesting thing that was brought up there is that if you have the Loxa, which is the antidote for someone that overdoses, if it's expired, you can still use it. They would advise you to take it and get it, you know, change for a new one and you can do that, or exchange for a new one, bring the old one in, they'll exchange it for a new one. But don't panic, say, oh my God, it's expired. You can still use it. It's still 90% effective after the expiration date for a time, not forever, but for a time. So, look at the expiration date on here. If it's close, you might want to take it in and get exchanged. If it's a little bit of past, don't panic. It can still be used until you get exchanged for the new one. So, there's some things that I, that I've, you know, had meetings and so forth this past week. And I'm sure everyone noticed I'm wearing my Ravens tie. Hopefully, the Ravens have success this weekend. Let's move on Ravens. Wear a mask. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. District Two, Commissioner Weaver.
Well, I feel like I've been hit on this morning. Small comment there. Anyway, first of all, I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and the 600 businesses in Carroll County or 600 something that belong to the Chamber for hosting the State of the County address again this year and especially Leadership Carroll, which we meet with or met with just the other day in questions and answers. That is always, I think, a highlight of being commissioner, meet with that group of people who have interest in learning about Carroll County and how it is, how it actually works. And the questions they have are usually very, very good. And so, learning experience for all of us, but that is a great event. So, I just want to say thank you again to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting that as they do every year and for their sponsors because it's, even though we had to do it differently this year, it worked great. And Farm Bureau has their legislative session, I think it was Monday night or whatever day it was here. Anyway, that went very well as far as getting their points of view out to legislators where they, the concerns they have here in Carroll County and where they want to continue to have input. They are basically the landowners in the county. So, they are the ones who need some, I need a voice there. And aside from that, Commissioner Fraser, you mentioned water and water issues in the Western United States and some of those areas. And yes, we do have some of those problems here and, well, we don't have the water shortages at the present time, but we can sometime in the future. And, you know, Pioneer Run was designed to be one of our sources and we never developed it beyond building the pond and the other two were kind of thrown to the wayside. And one of these days, it may become very valuable to us, but thank you for at least bringing that up.
Thanks, Dick. And Commissioner Lance, District One.
Good morning, everybody. In the interest of our very packed agenda, I'll yield my time to that. Thanks.
Okay. Again, the State of the County address, appreciation like Commissioner Weaver shared with the chamber, but also our, our team, Chris Swam and his, all his folks, it was seamless from start to finish, starting at zero nine and finishing before 10. So, really appreciate the support from our entire team making that happen. I attended the Ag Board meeting this week. Very informative, a great opportunity for me to really listen and learn and then share some of the things that are happening in the county to the board. They're a very active board and we maintain social distancing at all times. The governor shared earlier this week about the Relief Act. We're still deciphering some of the specifics about that. So, there's going to be much more to come dealing with the Relief Act, the legislation. The legislators are down in Annapolis. They opened yesterday and we have Mike Fowler, who'll be coming on in just a minute or a few minutes to talk about what to expect down in Annapolis as bills are continuing to be introduced. So, like Commissioner Wenz says, we have a very packed agenda, not just today, but walking into the rest of this winter. So, with that said, I know I mentioned the Relief Act as far as a state directive. Roberta, have we provided a press release or a information further than what the state has provided on the Relief Act at this point?
Our Department of Economic Development did, put out the same information that they've basically reposted what the state did since it's the state's bill. And I know the Chamber of Commerce did as well.
Okay, thanks. And weekly, Commissioner Lance and I are on a call with the Health Department and the hospital on what's happening in our community dealing with this pandemic. And I'd like to lead that right into, I think Ed Singer's not on, but Maggie is, to give us an update on what's happening in Carroll County regarding the health situation of pandemic. So, Ms. Maggie, you're up. Ms. Maggie may not be up. There she is. Okay.
Maggie, we see you, but we can't hear you.
Check your gear wheel.
Check your gear wheel and make sure your microphone's tuned. Top right-hand side. Still not hearing you.
Why don't we get in the hats and t-shirts that say, check your gear wheel?
An interest of time is Mike Fowler on?
Mike Fowler is on. Maggie, I'm gonna send you the phone number.
Okay, so Mike, why don't you jump on and tell us how the first day of session went and what we should expect over the next week or so and then go from there. So, good morning, Mike, and thank you.
Good morning. Yes, it's good to see you. I'd like to say good to be with you, but we play the cards we're dealt, I guess. Yes, you are correct. The session started yesterday. The flag fell. Began, of course, with a typical election of leadership, which remains essentially the same. Certainly, the President of the Senate, Ferguson, and Speaker Jones. There is a change of leadership, minority leadership in the Senate. Senator Simonare from Annapolis County becomes the Majority Leader and Senator Huff becomes the Majority Whip. So, the, I don't know if you had an opportunity to view any of the session yesterday, but you, you will see that the Senate chamber is divided into 47 phone booths, essentially. There are a lot of joking about that, but they are protected completely in the Senate chamber. The House is divided, though, being 141 members. They have split them essentially in half and about half have been annexed to another location over in the House Office Building. So, it's, it's gonna be very strange. It was a little difficult to, in the Senate, to see some of the senators as they spoke. Of course, they're all masked at the same time. So, very, very odd to see. Of course, there's a no entrance policy in effect. Staff, members and staff are the only ones allowed in the building. Lobbyists and visitors are not allowed. There is the potential to have an in-person meeting with them, but it needs to be scheduled in advance. You need to be escorted in the building and it is essentially frowned upon. So, our communication with, with the delegation and with the balance of the assembly is really gonna be with phone calls and texts and emails to the extent possible. All the floor sessions, all the committee hearings, and for the first time, all the voting sessions are going to be livestreamed. I think it's gonna be very, very beneficial, very interesting, particularly to see the voting sessions. The floor sessions in the chambers are gonna be limited to two hours and they'll take a break after two hours and sanitize the chamber. So, for the first couple of weeks, the, the meetings, the floor sessions will be few and far between. I think they'll wait until they get a number of bills heard because the hearings will begin today before they start any type of debate and, and voting on that. So, the testimony structure changes significantly as well. The days of packing the, the hearing room with large numbers of proponents or opponents appear to be over for this session. Witnesses are gonna be limited to four in favor, two favorable with amendments, and four opposed. And on the, on the opposed, two will be selected at random and then two organizations will be chosen by the chair. So, this is gonna be a highly, I'm gonna say scripted, and I don't mean that necessarily in a negative way, but, but a scripted way to, to hold these hearings. So, the members are gonna be really, I imagine, inundated with written testimony, with phone calls and emails, as they typically are, but we won't see those, those large turnouts this year. The other thing is the sign up to testify, whether, whether oral or written, needs to be done two days in advance. So, we're really gonna have to stay on top of this session to make sure that if we do feel strongly about something and we do want to weigh in, that we get into that two-day window or, or we're out of luck. So, moving on, their, their general legislative agenda. After the last session, each of the leaders put together either a task force, a work group on, on two issues. In the Senate was the President's Advisory Work Group on Equity and Inclusion. And in the House, it was the Speaker's Work Group to address police reform and accountability in Maryland. So, that's gonna be a very strong focus this session, obviously, police reform, equity inclusion, including health disparities, always education. Elections will be a strong focus and, of course, COVID relief. And then the environment and climate as it, as it typically is. You saw the governor's agenda is pretty straightforward. He's proposed the Relief Act in 2021, amounting to a billion dollars of relief. So, direct payments to recipients of the earned income tax credit. It repeals state and local taxes on unemployment benefits, offers sales tax credits to business and extends unemployment tax relief for small business. So, he's not, he's not submitted that bill yet, at least is not, not available yet, but we'll be taking a close look at that when it does. You're all familiar likely with Mako's legislative agenda. Obviously, we want to keep our budgets safe. Elections are a significant issue, as certainly as we've seen in this last presidential election, but funding fairness and the county's role in elections. There's been about a 20-year gentleman's agreement, if you will, about funding elections and typically a 50-50 split. And there, there's gonna be a push to try to codify that, to make sure that's, that's remains the same. Broadband expansion is obviously something near and dear to us here. And the state funding of public health and emergency agencies, obviously. So, there were a number of bills introduced yesterday, formally introduced yesterday. As I think you mentioned in an earlier session, about 900 bills were prefiled. That, that was obviously to get a head start on the session. since it's going to be a real challenge to keep things moving as they typically were. So a lot of those bills have been introduced. There will obviously be more to come. Yesterday, they had a schedule of vetoed bills, bills that had been vetoed by the governor after the last session. They chose not to act on those. They were carried over to Friday. Kerwin was not among them. Most of these bills were the duplicate bills. As you know, bills are cross-filled and if both of them wind up passing, then the governor will veto one of them because it's applicative. But there were also a number of those bills in there that were vetoed for policy concerns. I saw this morning that Friday's session in the House is a pro forma session, so they won't be taking any action on this Friday. So I assume that will be moved again, moved forward to another date. But again, most glaringly, the Kerwin bill was not among them. The Mako Legislative Committee, Commissioner Frazier and Commissioner Rothstein, excuse me, Commissioner Wance obviously participated in that. So there were a number of bills that came before you and were considered. Some of these, well, first of all, several subtraction modification bills, tax bills that we see every year, where the members will put forward a subtraction modification for a tax exemption. And Mako has a general policy that we would prefer those bills to be a tax credit because that would leave the county's budgets unaffected by that. So a number of those were considered. Community college funding, we supported that to increase, there was an offer of a change to the formula funding, funding formula, excuse me, last year. So there's a bill in to restore that. A bill, we saw a couple of bills actually we saw last year that have been reintroduced. One is the use of video cameras in special education classrooms, a very challenging and expensive bill which was opposed by the committee. Another bill reintroduced from last year that did not make it through is Senate Bill 330, which would require state-funded construction and renovation projects to make sure that the roofs of the buildings are constructed as such to be able to support in the future solar panels. It will be a very expensive, obviously, very expensive thing to do, and that was also opposed by the committee. Also, another bill coming back is a constitutional amendment for environmental rights, which would basically grant standing to anyone to intercede in any type of environmental project or issue. Another very, very bad bill, frankly, that the committee opposed. Prevailing wage, again, it would extend prevailing wage requirements to any project with state funds. And that would be primarily your schools, another bill that the committee opposed. One change in broadband. Right now, there's the rural broadband, the Office of Rural Broadband. There's a consideration to combine that to create the Office of Broadband and Joint Committee of Broadband. And that's an effort really to consolidate the efforts across the state, not only to expand broadband, but to continue to improve it. So that was also supported by the committee. And an interesting bill was a proposal to require state and local government and private employers to extend teleworking to the maximum extent practical. Each county must have a teleworking plan, which of course you do, but this would require teleworking as much as possible. This sponsor has admitted this is really a traffic bill, a bill to reduce traffic, but the challenges and the mandate of that are just a bit much. So the committee has again voted to oppose that. So that's kind of where we are. I did see, I mentioned one other issue is of course the environment and climate. Senator Pinsky and Delegate Stein will be offering what they are calling, I don't know the name of the bill at the moment, but it's essentially a climate plan that would decrease would decrease greenhouse gas emissions to sixty percent of the 2006 level by 2030. And very ambitious, and also to plant five million trees across the state. That's not been introduced yet, but we'll be taking a close look at that because the details will be, as they say, the devil's in the details. So we'll be looking hard at that. So that's kind of where we are. Things were moved slowly yesterday, but the hearings start in earnest today. So we'll see where this takes us. And that's all I have for you today.
Hey, Mikey, I appreciate you threw down a lot. It's like the table of contents to a big book, you know, and it'll be interesting how these chapters are played out. But is there any questions, comments to Mr. Fowler?
I'm all about the tree planting. That was nice to hear. That was the best part of your presentation.
Anything? You know, the governor said that the Relief Act was going to be the first on the agenda for the legislators to act on. But if he hasn't submitted it yet, you know, that's going to be interesting how that plays out.
Yeah, I expect it any day now.
Okay. Okay. Again, appreciate all you're doing. Appreciate keeping us up to date. Continue to, you know, reach out to us anytime throughout the week. And yeah, I think we're going to just make this, as you know, a weekly event. So for all those that are listening, you know, getting what is happening in Annapolis and the focus on the districts that cover Carroll County and Carroll County specific. Really appreciate, you know, Mike, all you're doing, okay?
Thank you.
One word thing real quickly, please. Mr. Fowler, keep us posted on the buzz about the governor's redistricting citizen commission that he's putting together. I'm very curious as to how that proceeds, what will happen with that. So whatever you find out about that, please keep us posted because that's all I have, I think, what the greatest impacts upon our district in the near future when the redistricting comes up. So thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, I see Ms. Maggie and I see you also on the phone. So you're up. Thanks.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Great. Hopefully now I can also share my screen. All right. Sorry about that. Thanks for the, you know, second chance. Now I have a new nickname, Maggie, on the phone. So you can call me Mop for short. That was Chris's nickname for me. So I appreciate that. Thanks for letting me sign in twice. So I'll just kind of run through these slides that you're used to. No big surprises. You'll see, let's see, hopefully we can get this moving. Too many, I think I need one more screen. There we go. Okay, so as you'll notice, there are, you know, we just kind of continue to go up. This graph we've presented now for a few weeks, it combines the confirmed and probable. So as you know, the probables don't count, you know, in our totals on our website, but we do count them and we do follow up with all of those folks who are probables. And as you can see, both the confirmed number of cases and the probable cases are increasing. And this last week was our highest number of confirmed cases yet. It was four hundred and ninety-three cases. So the pretty high rates we're seeing across the county. Here's our fourteen-day rolling average. You can see there's a little bit of a drop. I know Ed has kind of attributed that to possibly the fact that for a couple of weeks, we had weeks where there were only two days of testing instead of three at our site and other testing sites were also limited by the labs being closed on some of those holidays. So that may account for some of the dip there, but we are right back up pretty high. These are the two graphs by age, which I've just been putting both of them in there because there are kind of different ways of looking at the same thing. But as you can see, our last line in this graph is quite high and there really increases in all of the age groups. And here's a little bit of a better breakdown. You can see, they're all ticking up. But you can see our highest age group has been sort of consistently in that forty-five to sixty-four year age range. Next, we have hospitalizations and I like to mention every time that, you know, the past couple of weeks are usually a little bit low because it takes a little time to get that data in. And this is an unusual set of data because it's not reflecting hospitalizations at Carroll Hospital. It's reflecting hospitalizations of people in Carroll County residents who have tested positive for COVID at any point. So it's not as closely tied to our own hospital, but definitely to our residents and their level of hospitalization. And those numbers at the end usually go up after a week or two as we get more data in. Here's our hospitalization and deaths by age group. So you can see there are, you know, obviously the older age group has higher rates of both. But as Garrett Hoover mentioned on the school board meeting last week when he was presenting, they are seeing about, over fifty percent of their patients are in the forty to fifty-nine year age range. So we're definitely seeing an uptick in hospitalizations in those middle age ranges. And here are deaths by week of death. Obviously, you can see that we have definitely had an increase in fatalities over the last several weeks, couple of months. The blue line is the confirmed community deaths and we've consistently had one, two community deaths for the last, I can't count, at least nine weeks, it's several weeks. So we've really seen just an uptick in fatalities in the community and continue to see fatalities in the facilities. So this is Commissioner Boucher's special slide. He likes to, you know, he always has a special question for us. And so we did put this together for him on request. He was asking about the fatality rate and I know one of the things he wanted to point out was that this is good news. The fatality rate is going down and that's definitely true. You can see the top graph is for all of our residents, so facilities and community residents. And you can see how high the case fatality ratio was at the beginning. That was, of course, when things were very new, when the disease was very new and when it was, you know, spreading in facilities and reaching a lot of vulnerable populations and older adults and our fatalities were really high. Since then, we've definitely learned a lot about controlling the spread, controlling the infection and treating people with COVID. And so yes, the fatality rate has gone down significantly, which is just great news. And we continue to learn more about how to treat it and also, of course, more people who are younger are getting sick and hopefully they're healthier and able to weather the COVID infection a little bit better. But I do want to point out that, as you may notice, by number of deaths, the number of deaths has increased again. So after that first wave, when we had so many fatalities in the spring, the summer, we had a lull, kind of a lull in cases and a lull in fatalities, but that's gone back up. And even though the case fatality rate has gone down, so not as many people per case are dying, because we've had so many cases, the number of fatalities is still higher in the last three months than it was all through the summer month and early fall. So I just want to point that out that even though it is good news that the fatality rate is going down, the number of fatalities has increased.
Ms. Coons, thanks for taking the time to put that report together. It's been so depressing lately with the skyrocketing infections and the fatalities. I think it's good to get a little bit of glimmer of hope and some good news out of it. So thank you very much for putting that together for us.
You're welcome. It is always good to point out good news and hopefully the next few slides will also be seen as good news with the vaccination information. So anybody have any questions about the data so far before I get into the vaccination piece? Okay, so I'll move forward with that. And just a reminder, as I'm sure you know, and we could talk about this, but you know, I think that what I took from these slides, in addition to the fact that we're, you know, we're learning a lot about the disease, which is good news, is that we just need to continue to do all we can to slow the spread, that this increase in cases does lead to an increase in hospitalizations, which leads to an increase in deaths. And so we just need to continue to wear a mask, wash our hands, social distance, avoid large groups. It saves lives and the more people that do it, the better it works. So that's my message from that slide. All right. So you've all seen this pyramid and I'm sure everybody is aware that the governor is going to speak today at five and may give us an update on how the rollout is going to proceed. We know the federal government has expressed a lot of interest in vaccinating larger groups of people, especially older adults. And so we're just waiting to hear a little more about how that's going to work here in Maryland. So we'll all be listening at five to see what the governor has to add and kind of to the experience. So we just want, I have some slides here, but they're even a little out of date just because we had a clinic yesterday and I just want to kind of give you the latest information. But I do just want to say, Ed and I talked right before this meeting and he just wanted people to know that the vaccinations that we received, the vaccine we received this week is going out next week. And that allows us to plan and make sure that we have people registered and that we're using all the doses that we have. And it just allows for a kind of a more, kind of an orderly process of getting vaccine out. So we have about fourteen hundred doses for next week plus a hundred second doses. And with those second doses, our workload is going to start to get heavier because we'll be giving second doses along with obviously getting a lot of first doses. We anticipate that if things go as expected, that we'll be getting more vaccine soon, but we don't know yet when or where. Where we'll get, you know, when we're going to get it and where we'll be able to give it out. But we are preparing to expand our capacity. We've requested National Guard supports and if we get a team, they'll likely be at one additional location. We're still working on the logistics of that and where that will be and how that will look. And we haven't received that confirmation yet. We do want to know, we continue to get amazing help from our community partners to run these clinics. A lot of county staff, as I'm sure you know, have been helping us at the clinics and have been just essential and very, just very great to work with, very helpful and very upbeat and positive about helping us with the vaccine clinics. And EMS, law enforcement and other community partners have really stepped up to help us and we're going to continue to need more help as we expand our capacity.
Maggie, if I can ask you a question on that one, volunteers, say nurses that want to volunteer to help. How would they go about volunteering? Do you need the help yet or when you need it as we get into the larger populations?
That's a great question, Commissioner Weber. Thank you. So we are using a lot of volunteers. They are coming through our Maryland Response System. So Maryland Responds is a sort of a medical and public health volunteer corps. And the link is available on the front of our webpage. And we ask all of our volunteers to go through that process unless they're, you know, they're folks who work for the county or other local partners. But if you're a nurse or a doctor or even just want to help volunteer in another way, you can go through the Maryland Response System. There's just a brief training and some information. And then that allows us to help coordinate. We send out messages to those volunteers on that, you know, on our mailing list in Maryland Response and coordinate. And one of the things that really works best for us is to have a consistent set of volunteers working at these sites, you know, working together like a team. It just makes things run more smoothly. So, you know, we especially appreciate people who are able to volunteer, you know, just a regular amount of time so that we can consistently, you know, keep those teams together and just are really able to do a good job, you know, just using all the volunteers together. So, but we definitely would love to have volunteers and just encourage you to go through the Maryland Response System on our website.
Hey Maggie, before you move forward, what is the, not exact, but, you know, estimated percentage of those asked to get vaccinated or eligible to get vaccinated that are vaccinated when it comes to first responders and healthcare providers?
You know, that's a good question. I don't know for sure. I know we are pretty close to, you know, some of the first responders have have chosen to stagger their staff so they haven't all been vaccinated yet. But I believe in this coming week, we will be able to pretty much finish up 1A. So that's all the healthcare workers, first responders, law enforcement, EMS and healthcare providers. So I think we'll be able to finish up most of those. We'll have some stragglers and we'll certainly be able to fit them into subsequent weeks. So we hope to have one of our clinics finish them up next week.
I apologize. There's one piece to finish up, the 1A. But then the other piece is just because you're eligible and it's available to you, there are still those that are not accepting the vaccination. So understanding the percentages of those not accepting the vaccination, I believe is important as we continue to promote the importance of this vaccination. I believe is important as we continue to promote the importance of this vaccination and when available to take the vaccination. But there's still those that are not. And it's important for us to understand that number and then also why they're saying no, to just, you know, to persuade them to take it. So, but thanks.
If I may follow up, because I think Commissioner Ross, you presented a really good question to help us put it in perspective. Could we go back to the pyramid graph that you had up? With the 1A and all, yeah, thank you. Because what we have, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand citizens in the county. And I had asked Mr. Singer last night if we could possibly get the numbers at each level that we're faced with, like how many citizens are in 1A, how many are in 1B? Because we hear about the trickling in of vaccines, like fifteen hundred. I think it's good if we can see what's coming in up against what we are physically faced with and your health department trying to surmount is how many people are in each of these groups. So we have a better understanding of what we're faced with. So eventually, I like to try to see the breakdown at all the different levels and put that up against the amount of vaccines that are coming in. And that'd be a good emphasis to the public to see what we have to deal with. And if we can get that, I appreciate it. So thank you.
Sure, I'll let you know a couple of things about this pyramid. So, you know, as you may imagine, there is some, there are some details that we don't have. It's hard to know exactly who all fits into some of these categories. And the ages, that's pretty straightforward. But some of the other categories aren't a hundred percent clear. So that makes it a little bit complicated. And we are, you know, we're working to contact, we're working, you know, with a lot of these facilities and specific organizations and groups to contact them and get them to get vaccinated. And I made notes, and I think both of you had great questions, but I'll just let you know, we're, you know, we're all hands on deck right now trying to get the vaccine out and trying to get information to people who really want to get vaccinated. And so we're just swamped. And so even though we are, we're definitely doing our best to get, you know, to reach everybody. And our priority is to really get people vaccinated and to get information to people who are interested in getting vaccinated. So I will do my best to get some of that information for you, but it may not be, may not be right away to get some of those numbers.
I completely understand what you're faced with. But as far as a managerial standpoint, understanding what we're faced with and how to address it in numbers is one of the most important things we have to solve the problem. So even just trying to put us in some sort of ballpark, round numbers for the public to conceptualize what we're faced with and what we have coming in, I appreciate it. So thank you.
Maggie, just one other, just one other question. I know I had some volunteers ask how they volunteer. I've had some other people, and how will they be notified later on in the two and three categories? Especially the general population? Will they be notified or be a clinic type thing? How do you anticipate putting this together?
Right, so, you know, so for now, with where we are, you know, with the, we're kind of in the, you know, the one, starting in the 1B, we're able to reach out to people, to individuals and to groups, organizations, but we'll also obviously be reaching out to the general public. As it gets larger, these groups get larger, we'll do more public outreach. And certainly, people can call our call center, people can go to our website. And to get more information about registrations available. Hopefully, at that point where we're down in the two and three, there will be more places you can get the vaccine. So hopefully, people will be able to go to maybe their healthcare provider or their nearby pharmacy as well as, you know, some other clinics and things like that. And so as we have that information, we'll be getting that out to the public and through all of our partners. But we might not be able to do individual, might not be able to kind of people individually. But certainly, people can call us and can email us and can contact us in some way and get that information. But we'll also try to keep that up to date on our website so people can check and see how we're making progress and see what they. All right, so I think, just getting on to, I think, just to let you know a couple of numbers. So I just, I think you already know this, but for the first week, we had a hundred and three people vaccinated. Last week, we vaccinated eleven hundred and eighty-three. And this week, we're, I think we vaccinated around seven hundred people yesterday. So we are, our goal is every week to get out all the vaccines that we have gotten the week before. So the way we do clinics, we, as I think you know, we register people for appointments. And that allows us to keep things more organized. We've got a lot of compliments on the experience. I think it's pretty smooth. I mean, everybody has to wait for fifteen minutes to, you know, after the vaccine. But we are able to get people in and out pretty quickly and to make sure that people who are, you know, in the correct phase are getting vaccinated. So we don't want people waiting in line for hours trying to get a vaccine. We want to keep it as orderly as possible. But we are, we are using our vaccine every week and making sure that all the doses get out. So we're not waiting any. One other thing I do want to mention, so next week, we're going to, as I said, we're going to be finishing up 1A as much as possible. But we will also be starting some of 1B. So we'll be getting some public and private schools and child cares in to get vaccinated. And I'm checking to see if I missed anything in my notes. We, you know, so then hopefully, soon after that, we'll be, we'll be getting to some of the other, the older age groups. And we do have an interest form on our website that I want to bring people's attention to. We just started it this week. It's for people over sixty-five or people who have a health condition that puts them at greater risk for a serious illness from COVID-19. And it just, it's not a registration form, but it's an interest form where people can fill out just to say that they're interested in getting the vaccine and can answer just a few quick questions about where they live, whether they'd be able to get to a site, things like that, that will just help us to plan. And then will help allow us to contact them when we're ready with registration information. So encourage people to fill that out. People who don't have access to the internet can call our call center at four one oh eight seven six four eight four eight. It's open from eight to five, Monday through Friday, and they will help you fill out the form. And I think that's about it for me. I think there was one more thing. One thing that Ed did want to mention is that we're, you know, we're really working hard with our community partners to make sure that their, you know, that their staff or folks are getting vaccinated when their phase comes up. But we're a little challenged by some of these smaller group homes and folks who are homebound. We don't have the resources to go to all those locations because we have to focus on these mass vaccination clinics with large numbers of people. So we're kind of waiting for guidance to see a little bit more about how we're going to, how we're going to be able to vaccinate those.
Maggie, thanks. And yes, you are working very well with the community partners. Appreciate you, Ed, and the entire team. I continue to hear praise, strong, positive comments about what's happening as far as the testing site, the professionalism, the courtesy, the care that's being shown. Because nobody wants to go there and get some, you know, get tested, especially the way they are. But last night, I got another message about just how well they're being taken care of and the care, compassion, professionalism. So continue to share that, and we will continue to share that as well. But just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. We have a great team.
Yes, you do. Okay, any other?
Anything else?
Okay, seeing, hearing none, let's move on. Roberta, is there anything else for dealing with the pandemic, either locally, state?
This conference is no longer being recorded.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, let's move on with, excuse me. Start with that with Celine, dealing with Medicare improvements for Patient Provider Act or MIPA grant submission. Ms. Celine, you're on, and Ms. Ed, go for it.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. I'm here before you this morning with Gina Valentine, the Bureau Chief of Aging and Disabilities, Roberta Lawrence, our Aging and Disability Services Supervisor, and Debbie Standifer, our Grants Officer. And this morning, we come before you because we are seeking acceptance and approval, excuse me, approval for the Medicare improvements and for Patients and Providers Act, our MIPA grant submission and award acceptance. This award period would be from September first, twenty twenty, through August thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. This is renewable funding that we receive each year. I'm going to pass it to Gina, who will give you more details. And then she'll pass to Roberta to give us some additional information on our ideas and plans for the funding this season.
Thank you, Celine. Good morning, everyone. The Maryland Department of Aging received MIPA funding from the Administration for Community Living for fiscal year twenty-one, which is being allocated to area agencies on aging. The purpose of the grant is to enhance outreach efforts and activities that promotes enrollment of Medicare beneficiaries in several Medicare programs. The MIPA funding will be used to promote, excuse me, enrollments in low-income programs with a special emphasis on rural areas, individuals under sixty-five, and individuals aging into Medicare. Medicare savings programs result in improved access to healthcare for low-income Medicare beneficiaries. The funding will be applied to staffing in the amount of five thousand two hundred and forty dollars, marketing in the amount of one thousand fifty dollars, printing and supplies, four hundred dollars, training, two hundred dollars, and other costs at three hundred dollars. And there's no county match required for a total grant award of seven thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. So at this time, I'm going to pass it to Roberta. Just excuse me if I slip up because we call her Bobby, so.
It's all good. I'll respond to both. Good morning. This grant requires our program to focus on three priorities. First, to provide enhanced outreach to eligible Medicare beneficiaries regarding their benefits and outreach to individuals who may be, excuse me, eligible for extra help, low-income subsidy, or Medicare savings programs. There will be a focus on individuals under the age of sixty-five with disabilities, beneficiaries who reside in rural areas, and individuals who are new to Medicare or aging into Medicare who may need assistance. Secondly, there will be a focus on community-based projects to reach these target, excuse me, populations. Such programs will include partnering with the Carroll County Public Library System to offer Welcome to Medicare sessions that will be held virtually. And these have been very well attended in this previous year. Providing information to individuals who apply for farmers market coupons and mailings that are sent to individuals aging into Medicare. The final priority is to train Maryland Access Point staff who work with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities and also the ship volunteers to educate them about Medicare savings programs and benefits that are aimed at promoting wellness and preventing disease. So each year, our program reaches well over two thousand people individually through our program activities. We also place ads in the Carroll County Times, which reaches close to around twenty thousand subscribers.
Okay, any questions? I do have one, Bobby, you mentioned rural areas. Is that defined or is it just saying rural areas? I mean, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's a tricky question. It's just I'm curious if that is defined in any way that you're, the way you read it.
And Gina, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I know that some of our areas of focus have been in different areas as far as our low-income subsidized housing facilities for our seniors in different areas of the county. Is that correct, Gina, that will be answering that area?
It is, but we also reached out to the outskirts, excuse me, of the county, such as, you know, Kmart, Tawny Town, reaching down into the southern end as well. So I think while Maryland Department of Aging doesn't, you know, provide us with a specific definition for rural, and we do try to reach all of those, you know, outside areas, outside of the more populated counties or cities and jurisdictions.
Okay. Okay, any questions, comments?
I was going to say, like, the Commissioner wants areas, what you're talking about. I got you.
I mean, the board of Commissioners approved the Medicare improvements for Patients and Providers Act, grant submission and acceptance of the award.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments or questions? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, we're unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Before you go, I just want to publicly let you know that I've heard praise for the job that you and your staff are doing during these trying times. So thank you. I know it's been very stressful on everyone. I know you work in long days, but people out there are giving us feedback that you're doing a wonderful job, you and all your staff. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Okay, let's move on to Park and Rec. I think Jeff should be on line for Carroll County Sports Complex Soccer Field Lighting. Good morning, Mr. Deggots.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I'll turn it over to Maureen to get started with the bid information. And then I'll give you some background information, answer any questions you have on the project.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
We did go out to bid for the Carroll County Sports Complex Soccer Field Lighting. And we are requesting your approval to award the contract for the installation of the new field lighting at the sports complex to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. And I'll turn it back over to Jeff.
All right, as you see, we had quite a range of bids that came in for this project from the recommended bid of a hundred and eighty-four thousand all the way up to three hundred and fifty-eight thousand. We had some very good conversations with some of the vendors who came out to the pre-bid meeting. And obviously, there was a lot of interest in the project. The recommended bid, the company that we're recommending is also doing some work for the town of Manchester with lights at Christmas Tree Park. And they had a very good recommendation from the town manager there. And this bid amount is well within the approved budget of two hundred and eighty thousand. And I also would like to note that the funds budgeted for this project, approximately ninety-six percent of those funds are coming from program open space or impact. So those are dedicated funds only for park improvement projects. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Can we move that ninety-six thousand that's left over into further open funds or open parks funds?
What we typically do if a project comes in under budget like this, those POS funds, Program Open Space Funds, get reverted to other park projects. So that will help other park projects, either currently or in the coming years. So we would not lose that money.
Awesome. Okay.
This lighting that we're putting up, Jeff, is this additional to lighting that's already there? Is that why you called it new or are you replacing old lighting with new lighting?
This is additional. Last year, we did a project which relamped the three softball fields which had lights. We retrofitted them with LED lighting. This project will be lighting one soccer field that does not currently have light. So this is new.
Thank you.
Where's it located? Soccer field where?
We have two soccer fields at the complex. They are parallel to John Owings Road, right at the intersection of John Owings Road and Littlestown Pike. This will be the soccer field further away from Littlestown Pike.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
I make the motion, the Commissioners award this project Carroll County Sports Complex Soccer Field Lighting to Eastern Sales and Engineering Company in the amount of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred dollars.
I hear a second on this? Okay, I will second the motion. Can you all hear? Okay, can you hear now? Okay, we got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Frazier. I seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion or questions on this motion? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Great job, Jeff, and thank you very much, Maureen. Okay, let's move on to planning. Everything okay, Chris? Okay. Let's move on to planning. And I don't want to say sit back, but we have some time allotted in moving forward with adoption of compres zoning requests and map ordinances. Linda, Ms. Eisenberg, you're up.
Here we are.
Can you all hear me now?
We got you.
Good deal.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. I always, when you switch formats, it messes up your previous setting. So anyway, good morning, Commissioners. We are here before you. We are here before you today uh for your adoption of the ordinance to adopt the. By request, commercial, industrial, and employment campus um map amendments. Over the past year, the Department of Planning accepted review, reviewed and commented on twenty-eight by request comprising applications. These were reviewed with the public, the Planning Commission, and you, the Board of County Commissioners. Following the review, Planning Staff and Planning Commission did recommend these to the Board of County Commissioners on October twentieth. Um, through numerous listening sessions and a public hearing held on December third. Uh, the board, with the board, we also had um work sessions after the um public hearing. For you all to have discussion and provisional votes. So today, I'm here before you, and I sent a packet up earlier this week of the properties. Um, what their common name is, what their current zoning is, the requested zoning, and then what your provisional vote is. We also prepared the corresponding zoning maps based on the provisional votes. So Chris, if I can share my screen, please. Or Greg, control room. So the first list on our nineteen properties that you all gave a provisional. Vote of a favorable recommendation for the comp rezoning request. I'm not gonna run through them. Um, again, this was sent up earlier. Out of the twenty-eight properties, nine of the properties were given an unfavorable. Recommendation to move forward. So we do not have current maps, uh zoning maps prepared for these properties. However, if you do change. If you do want to change your provisional vote as we take the final vote, we will make those map adjustments. Um, one property of. Will need further discussion whether you choose to move forward today with not voting for the property. That is I one. One, I two, one, one, twenty, twenty, oh, oh, two, three, or known as Finch Services. The discussion was that we would hold on to this particular property. Um, and have a new public hearing if you all felt that you wanted to move forward with the revised boundary. Prepared um by the applicant for that particular property. And then another property, C two, oh, five, two, zero, two, zero, zero, two, eight. Long Meadow Farm, known as the baby property. That was, that property is on hold until the residential mapping discussion. The larger portion of this property also has an R twenty thousand residential request with the current C two requests before you today. Are there any questions before I move forward?
No, please go ahead.
Okay. So again, then here before you are the um requests in order with their corresponding zoning map number. And the request, do you want to review any of your provisional votes? Are are you um? Good with the votes as they stand, and I can run through each property if you'd like with the corresponding zone.
I believe it's appropriate, we go one by one.
Okay.
Here's further discussion we'll have.
Okay, so the first map change, um and I'm gonna go in map order now because they're very large maps, and some of them have multiple changes. Um, this first map.
Just, just a quick question. To to that request. If, if we unanimously voted for, why are we going over those? Why aren't we going over the ones that were just? Uh, um, affected by a split vote?
But my, my reason is just to confirm, and I wanna be able to see it once, just one more time. It shouldn't, I feel like it shouldn't take long. Again, just seeing it, um. I'm more comfortable, I mean. I'm more comfortable with that, so.
That's fine, okay.
I mean, but let's see where this goes and uh. And then we'll go from there, but I think uh. I won't say a roll call, but making sure each one is recognized, we get the thumbs up, we move on to the next one, so. Okay.
Okay, so then the first map um is map seven. And this is for property fifteen, which is the Mary Jane Graff property, or known as the Trigger Property. Um, it's outside of Line. In the rural village of Lineborough. Um, you can see him, sorry, I can't get my person show on the screen. But it is the red triangular piece on the bottom portion. Of this particular map that is requested for C two. And then here is the actual um map that was with the packet for the request. So it is this blue triangular piece of property here, um that's within the rural village. And you're vote, go ahead and move it into the C two district.
Okay, and Linda, our position was in favor?
Yes, so all the maps. Everything that you're seeing here today are ones that you voted in favor of.
And the planning. My, my, my concern is I just don't have that chart in front of me, so I can't see what I agreed to, and then with the Planning Commission. And what, you know, what was changed. So if you can say, this is in line with the Plan Commission and Plan Department.
Sure, um, so. Trying to multitask with a few screens, I'm just gonna scroll up. So this particular property um did have a favorable recommendation by the Planning Commission. And a favorable staff recommendation, and you all gave this a provisional favorable as well.
I apologize, and I don't mean to making this complicated. I think if we just look at this chart. This'll help us, and we can just run down each property, because we know the properties. Unless somebody physically see the property once again.
I do have, so we can do that then.
Okay.
Alright, so then this is a little bit of a different order. I was trying to put them in. For this portion, the actual request order, then subsequent are in the. Actual zoning map order. So then the first property would be um EC one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one. That is known as Abar Partnerships, or this is the site of the Legacy School. Staff gave us a favorable recommendation for employment campus as well as planning commission, and your provisional vote was for favorable.
Okay, so I will make the motion that we continue and we make a final decision for favorable for. EC one, four, or I four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any question on this? Or discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, next.
Um, the next is the I two, one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 three. Uh, Weddiken property. Um, this is located off of ninety-seven um on the Howard County border. Staff gave this a favorable recommendation, Planning Commission gave it a favorable recommendation, and your provisional vote was for favorable.
I motion, we accept it.
Okay, do we have a second? Got a motion? Do we have a second on this?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion or comments on this? Property in favorable? He's seen, here, none, all in favor? I apologize. Okay, I think, yep, unanimous. Thanks. Okay, next.
Is, is there a way, is there a way that we could make this chart just a tad bit bigger?
Thanks.
Cause I, I'm, I'm struggling here. And um, I would also ask uh for a little bit more detail. Uh, instead of was it just a provisional yes by us? I would like to know if it was provisional, all in favor, or just three to two, or whatever.
That's fair. I don't have that in front of me um about what your actual votes were. I apologize.
Okay, that, that's fine then, but if we could just make this bigger, and then. I'm sure we all will try to remember that some of these weren't unanimous. And um, which, which, which I think would probably uh. Would probably prompt a little bit more discussion. I, I don't know, so.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, Stephen. That's why I want to go one by one and not just clump this all together, so.
So can you see this better? Is this a little bit closer? For this is about as big as I can make it.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Just a thought, does Mary or someone in your office maybe have the, the, the?
Looking, she's looking right now through her notes, um, so we will, she's gonna come up on screen when she pulls those up.
Barbless, thank you. I should have known you had.
I just don't have them in front of me right now. I apologize. Um, the next property is C two, one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 four, Stockdale property. This property is located on uh Maryland twenty-six, south side, near the Liberty Exchange. Um, and the request is for a C two. Um, this had favorables again across the board from staff, planning, commission, and the board.
I motion, we accept the Stockdale proposal.
I apologize, Eric. Finish the motion.
I motion that we accept the Stockdale proposal.
Well, i- it's not the Stockdale proposal, it's, it's our final decision on the rezoning of the property.
Is there a certain way we need to phrase each motion for technical reasons, and if so, I, I think we should. Formed how we should structure it, if there's a legal requirement.
I think for consistency, if we make the motion to provide a final decision. On the piece of property, we're gonna be good to go. So it would be a motion to a final decision of C two, I four, two, zero, two, zero. Tag zero, 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 four. Okay.
And, and if I may. If I may.
Go ahead.
You also say. To uh, the zoning changes from R twenty thousand to C two, for example, and I think in this case.
That, that's fair.
Tim, do you have any other suggestions?
Yes, uh, remember, the end result here is you're gonna be adopting a rezoning ordinance. So, which would include properties that you think should be rezoned. So uh, the zoning ordinance, if you look in your file. The proposed zoning ordinance contains a list of those that would be rezoned if the ordinance is adopted, so. Uh, keep that in mind as, as you're going through. You're not actually rezoning them with each motion. You're, you're agreeing to include them in the. Final rezoning ordinance, which you'll adopt at the end of this, of the um session today.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense?
Well, we, yeah, so. So then, so then that begs the question, do we have to continue? Do we have to vote again on these? I thought this was all just one vote at the end.
It, in the, the end result will be you voting to adopt the proposed rezoning ordinance, which will include a list. Unless you intend to strike any of these. And that, it, it's up to the board whether you wanna continue taking them one by one.
Well, why don't we look at them one by one, but we don't have to make a motion on each one. If we have any discussion, we can discuss the ones we wanted to discuss at that particular point, and at the end of this, all the ones we have for favorable. Then we can make one motion to include all of them. Would be my suggestion.
Commissioner Frazier is brilliant once again.
Okay, let's move on. Now, so I, I, I apologize, so we, we'll take that. Linda, go through the properties. If there's any discussion, we'll have it. If not, we'll move on to the next property. That's all.
Okay, so moving forward then, the next property was the C two, oh, seven, two, zero, two, zero, 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 five. This is the. Stone Suffer property. This property is just outside the corporate limits of Westminster, um, and a row of other C two properties. This was a remaining R ten thousand. It's within the municipal growth area of the Westminster and Environments area. And again, this had favorable across the board for C two.
Any questions or comments? Seeing, hearing, none, keep going, Linda.
Um, the next one was C two, one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 six, the Ebbler property. This did have quite a bit of discussion from your group. Um, the request uh was from C one. To C two, or the, or in the alternative C three. However, staff and planning, uh staff gave it a favorable recommendation for C two. Planning Commission ultimately gave an unfavorable recommendation for C two. The Board of County Commissioners, when we met last on this particular property, gave a favorable recommendation for C two. Mary's gonna try to pull up the vote, but I don't believe this was a unanimous um vote on this one.
Where is this property?
Um, this property is in the Woodbine area. Let me scroll down to the corresponding map.
This property is just above the county line on Woodbine Road, not, not far from the uh, the Woodbine Inn, actually.
Linda, this vote was unanimous for a provisional vote. That's, that's what I have.
Yeah, I couldn't remember. Thank you, Mary. But I know it had a lot of discussion involved in it because of the nature of going from C one to C two. Um, and that was because the property owner, um. And I apologize, I can't find the map readily. The property owner um has an auto service center, but they want a. Vehicle, which is more heavier use than what's commonly allow, currently allowed in the C one, so that way they can do on body repair and things like that.
Is there any further discussion or comments on this piece of property? We unanimously had a provisional vote to approve to C two.
To C two, yeah.
Seeing, hearing, none. Let's move on to the next.
Uh, so the next was EC oh, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 nine. This was KMP Resource Recovery. The request um is from Ag to Employment Campus. Uh, this has a favorable recommendation, um, let me go back to the recommendations, um. From staff and the Planning Commission. Uh, this is one of the properties in the greater KMP Resource Recovery properties. This is the one that is within the municipal growth area, not quite adjacent to the corporate limits, but within close proximity. To the corporate limits um on the northwestern side of the landfill. The other KMP Resource Properties, which all had unfavorable recommendations, were on the southeastern side of the landfill itself.
Okay, and was this a unanimous decision made by us?
Mary, do you have that information?
Yes, that one was unanimous.
Okay. Any further conversation, discussion on this piece of property?
I don't think that was unanimous, if I remember right. I voted against that, I'm pretty sure.
I apologize. I just really have my informal notes here. We didn't keep the, an official record of this. So I apologize if that's the case.
That, that's okay. Dick, is there a Commissioner Weaver, I apologize. Is there any comments that you wanna bring up at this time, reference this?
No, just I was uh, I remember this was right next to the landfill. Uh, you know, if that's an employment campus, I thought it was the wrong uh site for that at this point. Um, you know, it's outside, it was still, still in waters down the road from it, so. Uh, I, I think the vote was four to one on that, if I remember correctly at the time. But I uh, I just think it's uh, the traffic of one forty add, add to it is going to be uh. A major issue for us, so uh, I, I did vote against.
Okay. Any other comments, statements, questions regarding this? Seeing, hearing, none. Let's move on to the next.
So, so just so I'm clear, would, would you move forward with a favorable recommendation for this, just so I can keep in my notes if we need to make any map changes?
It was a four to one recommendation for.
Okay. Okay, good.
From Ag to Employment Campus. Go ahead.
Okay, so the next then are C two, oh, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, zero, and zero, zero, one, one. The first is owned by SMO Inc., um, and the request is R forty to C two. The other one is Tevis Real Estate, and again, that request is R forty to C two. Those properties are adjoining one another in the area right outside of Finsburg. Um, everyone gave. Um, everyone gave, each group gave us a favorable recommendation to move forward with the C two designation.
Yeah, and I believe it was unanimous on our part as well. Um, any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing, hearing none, keep going.
Um, the next is C two, zero, nine, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, four, Matt Properties. Um, this is right outside the Winfield area. And, um, it is a request from Ag to the C two designation. Staff gave this an unfavorable recommendation, but Planning Commission and you, the board, gave us a favorable recommendation for the C two designation.
And was this also, I believe, unanimous?
I believe Commissioner Frazier voted against this for the provisional vote.
I thought I did.
Okay. Any further comments, discussion you want to bring up?
No, it's.
Okay. So, God, it was, uh, four to one, uh, provisional vote. Any further comments? Want to be brought up? None, that I see. Okay, let's move on.
Um, so the next is the, uh, seat zero, six, two, zero, two, zero, zero, one, five. This is the, uh, Mary Jane Graff property or Triggers Automotive, where that is located in the rural village of Limeboro, and this had, the process from Ag to C two and have favorable recommendations across the board.
Okay, anything else we want to talk about on this one? Seeing here no comments, let's move on to the Fogel property.
No, actually, the next one is C three, oh, seven, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, seven, eight, four, four, Professional Center condo. The existing zoning is R ten. The request is for C two. And again, this had favorable recommendations, um, across the board. This is the condo professional center on Old Washington Road, um, in the Westminster area.
Right, okay. Any comments, questions, statements? Seeing, hearing none, let's move on.
Um, the next is the Fogel Properties, I one, oh, five, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, six. Their request is conservation to I one. Both staff and gave this an unfavorable recommendation. Um, and in your provisional vote, you gave this a favorable recommendation for I one. This property is off of Obrecht Road, just outside the municipality of Sykesville, um, south of the dam, for plenty run reservoir and next to the Sykesville ball fields.
Okay, and I believe this was unanimous?
No, I don't think this was. I'm pretty sure I voted against this one.
Commissioner Frazier voted against that one also.
Okay, well, he does. Any?
Well, I, we we've already discussed it. I don't want to rehash it. I mean, it was four to one.
Yeah.
And I I, you know, I'm I'm fine with it. I brought up my objections before, and let's move on.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? I mean, it's an opportunity to let folks know as well as we're making a final decision on the on the rezoning of this, so, okay. Keep going.
The next is I two, oh, nine, two, zero, two, zero, zero, one, eight. This is MT Laney. The request is Ag and Conservation to I two. This was unfavorable from staff and planning commission, but, um, you, the board, gave it a favorable recommendation for I one.
Where is this one?
MT Laney is off of, oh, my gosh, Mary, I'm drawing a blank. What's the name of the road?
And I believe, uh, we had one abstention, correct? Commissioner Boucher? Correct. Was it a four, zero, one on this? Do we know?
Um, my notes show, I believe Commissioner Frazier voted against this one as well.
I do too.
Okay. That's right.
But I'm okay with that.
Okay. Any further discussion, conversation? I'm only seeing four commissioners. I'm taking the fifth is also, there is none, so let's move on.
The next is C two, oh, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 one, nine, Jem's Investment. Request is Conservation to C two. Uh, staff gave this an unfavorable recommendation. The planning commission poured a favorable recommendation with the new condensed boundary, and, um, you all also gave it a favorable recommendation with the new boundary. And this is a meeting off of one forty and Old Westminster Pike.
And that vote was three, two, with Commissioners Frazier and Wance opposing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I got, hey, Ed, every now and then I got my camera off so I can get the screen closer to my head. Can you remind me? This, when we get to these three, two votes, I think it's important maybe to have some uh, a little bit more discussion in the interest of transparency here. Um, can you remind us again the exact location of this? I I I can't remember.
Sure, this property is located off of Old Westminster Pike and one forty right across the bridge coming in from Baltimore County on the south side. It's pretty much the first parcel that you encounter in Carroll County on that southeastbound side.
Okay.
Yes, this is right by the reservoir. I think the reason that I voted against it is because of it's right by the reservoir. And it's, I, that's enough said right there.
Yeah, and that's, Dennis, I'm with you on that one, uh, because I I voted against it as a result of that, too. I'm concerned about runoff, if there's paving and that kind of thing into the reservoir. Uh, and I just, maybe it goes to the, to the, to the theme that that Commissioner Weaver had with traffic on one forty. Um, the one forty Carroll County line is not the place for more development right now, so I'm not lobbying to change, I'm just telling you why I didn't vote for it.
Right, I believe you also brought up public safety, as you always do, because of the traffic. Because of people getting off of, uh, one forty going down that hill and getting, and and how it's going to be utilized that way, and I, it was a very valid point.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 statist-
Yeah, go ahead.
Statistics, statistics in that area, uh, from from Green Mill to, well, actually from, um, Old Westminster. Or, uh, Old Gamber, I guess that is, Dick. I can't keep track of that road down there. But but statistics in that area are really high on accidents, and I don't know how you're gonna make access into this property unless it's right off of one forty. Where is this the one that you can get to off Old Gamber, Dick?
It's Old Westminster Road.
Oh, West, okay.
Yeah. You couldn't put it on one forty, that would be a disaster.
Can you get on it from the backside from Old Westminster?
Yeah, I think that's the plan. This is the old, um, I guess mine area, uh, and Old Westminster Road is a paved cow path, but they they can get on it. Uh, the outlet onto one forty is not pretty, but. I I was torn on this one. This is really a tough decision on this one. This is right at the reservoir, the, they rezoned, only the top portion of it gets rezoned, the bottom still is conservation, but, um, uh, this isn't the greatest site, but.
And we can take another vote on it if you want to, Dick. I'm on, I'm in favor of that.
Can we look at the property?
Yes, let me pull up the map.
It looks like this. Actually, it does.
For you, if I find it.
Yeah, I, if I remember right, they only get the top portion of this property because the bottom portion is a cliff.
Right.
Uh, and the 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 problem here is, and I remind me, I thought we heard from a neighbor or two that lives right there, because that entrance is gonna be right across from their residence.
Yeah, I believe we did hear.
Was that a yes, Linda?
Yes, you did. You did hear from the community on this one. I apologize, I'm just trying to, I had things in a different order, so I'm sorry.
Right, and the ones that were four to one.
They're fast.
Yeah, I don't want to bring out my objections, because we already talked about it, but this three to two is is a little different.
Absolutely.
And and if you can, Linda, I I don't know how, maybe it's easier, what what was the breakdown of the property, since they only want to do half of it now? In in other words, what was the, was it six acres versus fourteen? Uh, what was the total property? And what part of it do they just want to do?
Here we go, here's the map.
Total was seven point eight.
Right, now we're gonna do four point three or something, if I remember correctly.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Weaver, do you have any idea what is is is, uh, what they're looking at to do here?
Uh, no, I don't. I think they're looking for the zoning, uh, change. My my concern here is water and sewer. Of course, everything in Finsburg is water and sewer or lack of, um, I I really don't know what their plan is, other than go to, uh, where they want to go to commercial. Yeah, C two.
And and that's another good point, Commissioner Weaver, water and sewer, because there isn't any there, and they're gonna go to well and septic, and look how close it is to the reservoir.
Well, it's it's in a mine, on a mine area, so that even, I I don't know.
Even worse.
This property, you recall, is very, um, it has a lot of restrictions because of the environmental, um, components of the property between wetlands, forested area, and steep slopes. Um, there's not a lot of opportunity here to develop.
Well, that's why they cut it down to the four point three, whatever it is acres, to develop rather than the entire property.
So I understand a lot of the concerns and agree with them, but I don't know the property well enough, so Commissioner Weaver, what, I mean, where are you at on this? I know where you were. Are you in the same place or?
I am torn, but this is not a great property to go commercial. I mean, it is a mountainside next to the reservoir. And has a lot of restrictions, uh. I would suggest we take a revote on this and relook at it.
Okay.
If if I may add, I I think what eventually got this to pass is the fact that whatever this property owner decides to do, all these various concerns that we have, which are extremely legitimate, especially ones brought up by Commissioner Wance, would be oversaw by the Planning Zoning Commission to ensure that all these issues are addressed and in compliance with the law. So just because we'd approved this, doesn't mean all these things would actually take place, that they'd have to get it checked off by the people who we've appointed to review. And that it's their responsibility to execute those things. All we're doing is changing the zoning, but whatever proposal they bring forward, we'd have them exercise the responsibility to ensure that those are addressed.
You know, I I agree with you, except for, um, just because we can change the zoning doesn't mean we should, and if we do, we're applying resources afterwards that would have to make the determination on whether it's a, um, suitable piece of property for that, you know, commer- whatever they want to develop it as. And, you know, we are resource constrained as is, so we should, you know, look at this as, is this appropriate property to be commercial at the end of the day? And it sounds like, you know, we're taking another hard look at this. Um, again, I just don't know the property well enough. So I'm, I won't say, I'm relying on understanding the property. I do understand the concerns, so.
Uh, if I have this correct, even if we turn this down, they can bring it back later to the Planning and Zoning Commission years from now to have it rezoned, correct?
So the process would actually then be a changer mistake. So this property is not consistent with the Finsburg plan. So staff gave it an unfavorable recommendation because of that. Um, so they couldn't, if unless you reopen a comprehensive rezoning, they don't have a comprehensive rezoning um, format in front of them. It would have to be a change or mistake, and they could come forward with that, um, application, and they would have to cha- choose, they would have to decide whether there's been a change, um, in the character of the overall community unforeseen by the Finsburg plan or a mistake in the original zoning or vote would have to be the bar that would be set, and it would go through them, planning commission, then you all would ultimately take a vote.
So in other words, there are tools for, in place for somebody to come back requesting rezoning. It may not be the, you know, easiest, you know, path, but it is a path forward to, uh, making a request and getting approved or disapproved, so.
That is correct.
Okay, any further thoughts, comments, motions, discussions on this property?
I'll make a motion that we don't change the the zoning on this property from, I think it's Conservation.
Okay.
I'll start it.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on changing the provisional, uh, you know, decision that was made on cha- uh, rezoning. All in favor of that motion? Okay, all opposed? Four to one, provisional decision carries, uh, as unfavorable. Okay, let's move on.
Oh, provisional decision changes to unfavorable?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, provisional decision changes to unfavorable.
Right, okay.
Keep going, Miss Weaver.
Okay, moving on, uh, you know, I scroll up to the page here. So the next one is Marilyn Mallett, uh, C three, C two, oh, three, two, zero, two, zero, 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 two, zero. The request is from Ag to C two. Staff gave this an unfavorable recommendation. Planning Commission and the board, um, gave a favorable recommendation for C two. And this is located off of ninety-seven north of Westminster on the southbound side of ninety-seven.
And I did vote against this one because the word's located, is you're trying to go to C two, which is, according to C two, is supposed to be accessible by walking or biking. No one's gonna walk or bike out to to the C two location. It's right in the middle of, 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 I believe it's right in the middle of, um, housing. I just don't think it's the right place to put C two, which is why I voted against it.
This was Westmark?
Yes.
Okay.
But I'll leave it at that. I brought up my objections, and I know it was four to one, so we're good. I just wanted to state it again.
Yeah, remember the discussion, um.
Miss Weaver wants to side with me.
Any further comments or discussion or questions on this piece of property? Okay, let's continue.
The next is C two, oh, seven, two, zero, two, zero, 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 two, four, Piper. Um, the request is Ag to C two. This property is located at the intersection of Maryland ninety-seven and Maryland thirty-two. Um, it is just south of the, um, Y, the YMCA. Uh, staff gave this a favorable recommendation as well as planning commission and you, the board, as a provisional vote for C two.
Okay. Any further conversation, discussion on this? Seeing, hearing none, let's go.
Um, the next is EC one, four, two, zero, two, zero, 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 two, five. County Commissioners of Carroll County, request is Ag to Employment Campus. And again, this had favorable, um, recommendations across the board. This is formerly known as the Delaney Property, uh, north of Runsdale. Um, it was a former middle school site. And the request is for employment.
Yeah, it's across from Century High School, right, next to Legacy School. Any comments or discussion on this piece of property? Even without the glasses, seeing, hearing none, let's go.
Okay, and the next term I'm gonna talk about together, C two, oh, five, two, zero, two, zero, three, one, and three, two. Uh, three, one is Buckman and Associates. The request is R ten thousand to C two. This was favorable across the board as well as Semino Trustee, which are three properties, and all of these together create a row of C two. Um, that's in conformance with the master plan, already developed as commercial type properties. So this had a favorable recommendation again, uh, by planning, staff, commission, and you, the board of county commissioners.
And where is this property?
They, these series of properties are located along Maryland twenty-six um, to the west of, uh, the Princess Shopping Center, and there's- to the west of the Princess Shopping Center and there are small little slivers of former residences that now converted to commercial uses.
You're right next to Princess Shopping Center, okay. Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing, hearing none? Keep going.
Okay, so this, those are the last properties that at the time there were favorable recommendations to move forward. We've prepared those series of properties, maps for the ordinance. The next series are ones that had unfavorable recommendations to move forward, so I will now move through those.
Well, can we, should we make a motion for the ones that we've already looked at and approved excluding the one, I don't remember the number of it, but I know you do.
At fifty nine.
That we have changed to make a motion so that now that is taken care of before we move into these other ones, because these other ones, I don't know, they may or may not take more discussion, I'm not sure, but these are the favorable ones.
And we're not going to be changing maps if we all agree to these.
Except the one that we agreed to change.
Well, no, we agreed to change it, make it unfavorable.
Right. They've already made the map changes, I thought. That's what I'm saying.
No, so, so, no, I agree. So should we make a motion and agree to the changes favorable for what we just discussed, or should we just continue on and accept all changes made? Roberta?
You could do it either way. The ordinance is written to include the ones that were all favorable. And so the, you have to make the one, you know, you include them all except for the one, map fifty nine, I think Linda said. These would also be amendments to the map if you chose to change any of your prior preliminary votes. I guess it makes sense to do, to, I'm sort of a twixt in between. It doesn't really matter. I think maybe go through the whole thing and accept it as it is with these. One so far, or maybe more changes. Does that, does that work best for you, Linda?
That's why, I mean, the ordinance is written, or what we could do at the end is when the motion, so for the ordinance twenty twenty one oh one is to remove map fifty nine from the ordinance and then add maps, whatever they might be, with the changes. You know, we would just amend the ordinance for them to sign, but the motion would carry all of the maps.
Yeah, so I guess wait to the end.
Sounds good.
Let's continue.
So the first one was that has an unfavorable recommendation was C two oh four two zero two zero 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 seven, Playtime Corporation. This property is located off of Old Westminster Pike. It does front Maryland one forty, but there is no access to Maryland one forty and it is currently a daycare center. In order to access this property, you have to access it through a little residential driveway. And this had unfavorable across the board.
Okay, yep, I remember this one. Any comments? I think Commissioner Weaver's.
Leave it as unfavorable. I mean, this is not a good, good thing.
Okay, seeing, hearing none, let's keep going.
The next was Boeck four LLC. This is the former, former North Carroll Community School and is currently a church, I believe. It was a church before it became the school and I believe it's acting as a church again. It is just north of the Westminster Municipal Grove area adjacent to industrial land. This request was from Ag to C two and it was unfavorable across the board. Staff, planning, commission, and the board gave it unfavorable.
Okay, any further conversation, discussion? Seeing, hearing none, keep going.
The next is the current North Carroll Community School, C one oh three two zero two zero 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 two seven. Their request is Ag and their original request was C one or in the alternative C two. Staff and planning commission and you, the board, gave us unfavorable recommendations across the board. The school itself is a primary principal use in the Ag zone. So this being Ag zone does not change their position. They are allowed to be there. It's not a non-conforming use and therefore the unfavorable recommendations carried across. And this is located off of Stone Chapel Road and ninety seven.
Okay. And any further comments? Discussion on this? Okay, seeing, hearing none, keep going.
The next is C three oh four two zero two zero zero one two and one three. These are K and P Resource Recovery. Originally, there are four different applications done by K and P Resource Recovery. One was withdrawn for an conservation to I one. The remaining two are Ag to C three and Ag to I two. Both staff and planning commission gave these favorable recommendations and the board gave these unfavorable recommendations.
Okay.
These are, so these are properties right by the landfill area, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry, yes. Right by the landfill and Reese, across from Reese Fire Department.
Right, right, right. And actually, I know the two properties, I don't remember the numbers that are, that are right adjacent to one forty. I had actually said if it was going to C two, I would vote for it, but it was C three, so I think it was a four oh vote against these properties anyway. But anyway, those are the only two I would have changed my vote for if they were C two instead of C three. I just want to put that out there, but we can move on.
There was a lot of public comment on this and I think we got our votes, okay. Any further comments on these two pieces of property? Seeing, hearing none, let's move on. You want to go to, I can't even see this, twenty nine, and then go back or which, where are you going?
Yeah, that's right, let's do that. So then the next, in the series, and we can have further discussion about Finch Services and Long Meadow. I two oh four two zero two zero 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 two nine, this is Roy Pool Property or Tumbleweed Express. This is located off of Old Westminster Pike. The request is Ag to I two. Staff and planning commission, as well as you, the board, gave this an unfavorable recommendation for I two. This has been the subject of multiple board of zoning appeals and they do have a very limited VZA approval to continue their operation.
Okay.
I voted against this one. It was only so that they, I two, they had to meet more stringent standards in the future if they tend to expand or do anything, but you know, he has a lot of community out, it's important not to do this, so.
Okay, any further comments, discussion? Seeing, hearing none, let's go to thirty.
Thirty, EC one three two zero two zero 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 three zero, the Culver and Holber Bay property. This is just outside the corporate limits of the town of Mount Airy, north of the Harrison and Lashir property. Staff gave it a favorable recommendation. Planning commission gave it unfavorable as well as the board. And staff will go back and say we give it an unfavorable two. It's just we didn't realize the timing that the town, after we had gone through our review, was now going through the annexation process. So for the Harrison and Lashir property, not for this particular property. So the timing does not seem the best right now for the reason of this, and that was part of the discussion.
Correct, I believe it was unanimous. Any from us, any conversation, discussion? Seeing, hearing none? Let's move on. The Long Meadow Farm?
Okay, so the Long Meadow, C two oh five two zero two zero 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 two eight, this is known as the Baby Property. The request is for the thirty acre portion of the I, for a thirty acre portion of the I one to be rezoned to C two. Staff and planning commission gave this book a favorable recommendation with the new boundary adjustment, meaning it's not quite as described in the Freedom twenty eighteen master plan. From our last discussion, this property rezoning request will be put on hold because they also have an application in concurrently with a request for the R twenty thousand residential district on the balance of the property that's not already currently zoned R twenty. So they'll be for the remaining industrial portion as well as the conservation portion on the site.
Yeah, and I brought this up and request that we hold off and look at the other piece of property leaning towards the C two because of their intent. I spoke to the property owners and representation from the property owners on the intent of building a fifty five plus housing area and then the R twenty thousand and the rest of the property, which would, you know, be a nice use of that property. Also speaking to the community surrounding that property. I think we don't need to rush into this and let's make the decision when it's ready to be made, which also includes that large residential area that butts up right against this thirty acres. So unless there's any objection, I don't think there was before. Let's continue to hold off on this, get this one right. Okay, seeing, hearing none, let's discuss the Finch Services property on whether we're able to make a decision on moving forward or not at this point, so.
Hey, hey Ed, back to that one you talked about. I remain very confused as to what it is that people want there. So if with, with that request of getting it right, I sure would like to have more details because, you know, you got, you got one set that that thinks residence would be better, that brings in a ton of vehicles and what have you, and then you got the other that doesn't, so. The confusion down there is, is a little bit off the charts. So I would only ask that maybe we could drill down on exactly what it is other than the rhetoric. That's all I.
No, I appreciate it and it's not just off the charts and that's putting it mildly, okay? So continue to have the conversations with them. I really appreciated the landowners and their representation reaching out to me. Linda and I have been talking over the last couple of days as well on what they're asking for. And we're just going to continue to pursue it. I think we're getting much closer to understanding not just what they want, but what really makes sense in there. So, yeah, I appreciate the the patience as I'm trying to do the due diligence on this, but yes, it is very confusing, so.
Yeah, also keeping in mind that all these decisions have to do with property rights as well, so.
Absolutely. A hundred percent agree, so, okay.
What's the number on this?
Yes, please, Finch property?
So the Finch property, this is I two one one two zero two zero 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 two three. And the request is to go from Ag and I two to the entire property going to I two. And this had unfavorables from staff and ultimately planning commission. The discussion was that the applicant provided a revised boundary and there was a discussion that they would be willing to go to I one, but they wanted to leave it up to the ultimate decision for the board. If there's going to be a boundary change, the thought was that there would be a new public hearing on the new I one designation as well as a reduction in the industrial boundary. And I'm trying to pull up a good map. It's really hard to see because what they proposed, if you can look at the map, was looking at the blue boundary and along Rupes Mill and Medford and the residential units abutting the Medford Road portion to pull back those boundaries back by a hundred feet to add an additional buffer of non-industrial land.
I guess the big question is, would the changes that they're requesting to make, would that change any of the, I mean, the infrastructure that's needed to accept this type of change? Because I mean, it sounded like the biggest concern was the the roads. And, you know, was the infrastructure that surrounded this piece of property. I mean, that's what I remember.
Actually, I'd like to propose we change the I back to Ag. Then we'd have an old Ag district in there and not even have any industrial.
Well, I believe everything around that on the other side of Old Windsor Pike and and east side of it is already I, and that's what, yeah, it's all the purple already. So that's what they wanted to conform to or change the other half or other part of their property to I think it was I two, but if they go to I one. The reason I think that we put this, pulled this out, because after listening to our discussions, the property owner made adjustments to his original request. You know, to, I guess, conform more to what we were talking about. And because he did the extra due diligence to perform that, I just thought it would be fair to put it out to the neighbors surrounding them that objected to it to see if they were more in favor of this or not. But as a public hearing, I mean, he didn't have to make those changes. It was good, I mean, I know he wants to get the change in the zoning, that's why he did, but you know, that was just my feeling. He heard us, he made changes according to what we said. Let's put it back out there, see if the surrounding property owners are more in favor of it with his changes. If we all, if you all don't agree to that, that's fine. We can move on and just vote on it the way it is.
I think that was very well said.
Sometimes he's right.
Okay.
For me today.
What other comments on this? Go ahead, Commissioner Wance.
I don't think that, I don't think that anything's going to change by hearing from them. A hundred foot buffer, quite frankly, is, you all know what a hundred feet is? I mean, I don't even know what that accomplishes. But, I mean, if you would have said a hundred yards, that's a football field. I'm good with that maybe, but a hundred feet? You know, why not make it a hundred and twenty or eighty? I don't, I don't quite understand what that buffer means. But in the interest of making sure that the, that the surrounding residents have their say, I kind of agree. Let them come back and tell us that they don't agree, because I'm pretty sure that's what they're going to do.
Yeah.
And I would, and I continue to say, I'm going to continue to say this, and I know you get, y'all get tired of hearing my same old rant and rave over this stuff, but Medford Road and Route thirty one is the most dangerous intersection. One of, if not the most dangerous intersections in Carroll. There would have to be major infrastructure changes to that intersection if anything different than Ag and residential is introduced there. Period. Major infrastructure changes. Not a red light, not, not just a blinking light, not signage, major changes. And I don't know how that would either be accepted. I mean, if, if the property owner would be required to make those changes on their own, which could quite frankly happen, but you talk about expensive because there's blind spots there, there's, there's grade issues, there's limited sight distance on and on and on. That's an incredibly terrible intersection. That's the biggest reason why I am against seeing any changes in that area. Not to mention the fact that the folks that live out there don't want, you know, eighty seven more trucks there, because it's just, it's terrible out there. So that's why I was kind of against it, but I agree, Commissioner Frazier, if you think it's necessary, we can certainly hear from the folks again.
I, I think my concern was just exactly what you said. Commissioner Wance was about that road. Can it be changed to accommodate a change in zoning? And it sounds like it can't, or if it does, it's extremely expensive to make that happen, but procedurally, if they're changing, you know, their request, I think I also voted with you or however we decided was to get this to a public hearing. I just want, if we do this, how can we do this expeditiously, efficiently? Can it be done that way where it's not going to take? Can it be done that way, where it's not going to take, you know, a lot of logistics and resources to make it happen? I mean, I, if we can do it efficiently, expeditiously, that's a great thing, I'm not saying that determines whether we do it. But that's the only piece I'm looking at, you know, how do we get this thing done, so.
So Commissioners, I can just draw your attention, I, this is the map that was sent to us regarding the new proposed boundary. So again, they're still leaving it up to you whether you want to put out for public hearing, I one or in the alternative I two. They're showing I two on the map, which is the same as the current request under consideration. Then if you can see, the black dashed line is the actual property boundary. The gap between the black and the purple, that is the change on the north side on Old New Windsor Pike. And again, along the residential portion from the homes off of Medford Road. It's only really two sections that they're proposing to change, so basically it's about a hundred foot buffer by like. Five hundred feet on each.
That just doesn't seem like a lot.
No, actually. Actually, when you look at it like that, it doesn't seem like that much.
You know, putting in perspective.
If if I might add, I think sometimes in politics, solutions are counterintuitive. And that on the long term, the rezonias property might lead to fixing that intersection problem.
Put the emphasis on, put put the emphasis on might.
Yeah.
Because I'm telling you right now, I I don't know what the numbers are of how many folks have been seriously injured and killed there. But I'm not interested in might versus lives being changed. Because that that intersection's ridiculous.
I think if.
Point, nothing's being done.
Well, the, I think the question is, if the zoning adjustment was not requested. Were we in a position to make this unfavorable? And now looking at this and seeing that the zoning adjustment request is, you know, relatively minimal. As, you know, Commissioner Lance pointed out, it's a hundred feet, not a hundred yards, I mean, does that change our minds? Um, that's kind of where we're at, changing our minds big enough to then go to public hearing. So, and I'll leave it at that, so what what I mean, what's the, what are the thoughts?
I would like just to move, we leave it the way it is and not move to public hearing on it, I don't think it's going to change things.
Is that a motion, Dick? Okay.
Yes.
So we have a motion to make a decision of unfavorable or provisional decision of unfavorable on this property. At this time. Is there a second on this?
Yeah, I'm going to second it. The, Commissioner Boucher, I I I know what you're saying, that this could precipitate the the move to do something out there. And I'm not arguing that point at all. My point is, you know, changes should have been made out there already. It it it's way overdue and as a result of that and a result of the S H A. Knowing full well how bad that one is and having limited resources. Because this was discussed when we were talking about the Gillis Falls issue and it, you know, we went with that one. That that one took precedence because of statistics, but. My my thought or or my my my. My thought process here is this, if 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 we're attempting to get this intersection made safer. By making zoning changes, that ain't right.
Yeah, you know what, maybe we should add this intersection to our transportation letter. When we when we submit it for safety concerns.
Yep.
And, yeah, I I agree with that, Dennis, we, it sort of got glossed over because there were other things that were going on there, so I agree with that. And and listen, I fully well understand, I I I respect the property owner here, I really do. I mean, we, I've had, I've had several conversations with him, he's a, the the family's good, you know. We've known each other for many, many years here in Carroll and I I just think it's it's the wrong time right now. I mean, if we could maybe attempt to try to get something done out there infrastructure wise, that would be more acceptable. To those that live around that area, you know, I I would be more than willing to assist them with that. But, you know, we didn't hear anything from anybody other than please no.
That's true.
Except for the property owner.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So I guess it goes to my theme of, you know, a lot of these things, decisions that I've been made, that I've been making is a result of listening to. Our constituents and listening to the citizens that are surrounding a lot of these properties, so.
But but same, like the baby property, like you shared, you know, remembering the rights of the property owners as well, and there's got to be a balance. I mean, I I agree. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second to making a provisional decision of this being unfavorable in moving forward. Any other further comments, discussion? Okay, who is in favor of this motion? At this time? Okay, against? Four to one, boys, I apologize, three to two. Motion carries. Okay, now. All properties besides the Long Meadow Farm. Getting a, I think, Linda, if this is correct, a motion to accept all changes and provisional decisions. That have been made by the board and moving forward, would that be good enough?
Uh, no, I believe you would have to adopt, make a motion to adopt ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, one. Maps seven, twenty-one, forty-six, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-seven, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-three, seventy-seven and seventy-eight. And I can put that on the screen for you, I believe that would be the appropriate motion reverted to him.
Right, did you, did you? Linda, did you exempt from your list of maps the one that the commissioners?
Yes, map fifty-nine is being removed, so I would, I would remove that, so it would be this motion excluding map fifty-nine. It would be. These maps, not fifty-nine, excluding fifty-nine. We'd have to amend the ordinance part to having it signed. And then I have one more map to show you, that's a technical correction once we're done with this.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I I will try to do this, I'll make the motion that we accept ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, one. With zoning maps seven, twenty-one, forty-six, fifty-three, fifty-two, missed that one, fifty-seven. Sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-three, seventy-seven and seventy-eight.
Did you say fifty-nine?
No.
Okay. Was that correct, Linda? Okay, we have a. Motion and a second. All in favor? Okay, unanimous five zero, got it. Okay, Linda, what's next?
So finally, if you could just indulge us for one more second. Ordinance two, zero, two, one, zero, two is intended to correct and clarify map forty-one. This was previously adopted in ordinance two, zero, one, nine, oh, eight, so this was the comprehensive rezoning maps. Of twenty nineteen and this property was inadvertently missed from the map change. And this property is just south of Hampstead, the property's original zoning was industrial restricted. And the zoning that was put forth as part of the actual comprehensive rezoning effort when we moved from B N R B G. And I are an I D to the new I one and I two and C one, C two and C three. This is the Hampstead Baptist Church parcel six, one, two, and so it's kind of the red. Upside down L shape along handover pipe, kind of a catty corner to the industrial. And so we would make a motion to go ahead and just make that technical correction.
Why was it missed?
We had fifteen hundred, we had fifteen hundred properties that we had up for review. And this happened to be one of the ones that was changed everywhere, but on the final map did not make the change. So I apologize for that.
And and this is the one lot next to Trenton Mill Road?
Um, no, it's south of the gray block of Dars, Dars Garland Drive. I wish I could point out to you better on the the screen, but I'm going to try to zoom in a little bit more to the actual map itself. Can you see the property that says six, one, two, next to parcel four, one, four in the black lettering? Outside of the municipality. North of the light purple, like purple parcel, parcel four fifteen, it's the one just north of that.
It's red, if that helps.
Right, it's labeled.
So it's just an oversight.
Linda, it was changed everywhere else, it just didn't get on the actual map, correct?
Correct, it was part of the public hearing, it was part of all of the discussions of what we were changing to be in performance with the new zoning districts. This one just happened to not make it to the map correctly.
Okay. Are we prepared to make a motion on this adjustment?
Well, I can make a motion to the ordinance numbers, but all the map numbers, I don't have all them. I'll make a motion to accept ordinance two, oh, two, one, oh, two. With, you have to help me on the rest of it, Linda, what map numbers am I looking at?
Map forty-one.
Map forty-one? Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
That was quick and easy.
Okay. We got the motion, do I hear a second? Is there a concern about this?
Well, I I'm I'm waiting, I I know the area well, but I'm kind of waiting on Commissioner Weaver here on this one. I'm not, because this is sort of, this is sort of in between the two of us here, so.
Yeah.
Your thoughts, Dick?
I'm kind of caught here off, you know. Yeah, is it just a simple mistake or is this something we need to look into, I don't know, I'm.
Linda, when was the zoning change actually made by the Board of Commissioners?
Um, in December of twenty nineteen, December twelfth.
And what was the process, say it again, I I might have missed it.
So this was part of the overall comprehensive rezoning process, so if you recall, we did our text amendments. Of creating now the C one, C two and C three, I one and I two districts. And then we had to move properties out of those districts into their new corresponding districts. And this property was missed, frankly, in the mapping portion of that, but it was discussed and talked about. It had an I R zoning and then it was going to C two, because it really did not meet the I R definition. And it's currently the Hampstead Baptist Church.
So, so it was done as the, it was done as the bulk on process, not a part of the buyer request process. Because it's an obvious change, as so many of those were. And so the Commissioners accepted the ordinance that would have, that changed this already. Now they're just, this is just a cleanup mechanism to make the map meet the ordinance that they've already adopted.
Error, this was an error, that was an oversight.
Does that, does that help you, Commissioner Weaver?
So.
Yeah, I guess it does, I just caught off guard, that's all.
So since this seems to be court proceedings here and we're, I don't, and and I don't want to lead the witness, but. Is there any, is there any thoughts as to? Any of the surrounding? Folks having a problem here? With the fact that this is being considered a correction or is this just sort of a given?
I want to speak for Linda, but it's my understanding that this is really already a decision. This is already a decision the Board of County Commissioners has made to make this change from I.
I one, I R, I, that's what restricted, correct.
C two, it's, this is simply a cleanup of the map. That they found in doing all this other work that that they staff failed to put it on the actual map.
Okay, I I'm I'm I'm, I know this is your district, Dick, but I'm going to go with it, because I I think it's just a. I've got the the explanation and I'm fine with it, knowing that the surrounding area, actually going from I to C. It's actually probably an advantage over there, but anyway, I'll second, if somebody made a motion, I'll second it. I don't know if somebody.
Made a motion.
All right, I'll I'll second it.
Any conversation, discussion, further questions for planning or Ms. Wyndham? Seeing, hearing, none, all in favor of this change? Okay, Dick, is that, are you up or down, I can't see, okay, unanimous five oh. Okay, got it, anything else, Linda?
No, that's all that I have for you, thank you so much for your time and we are done this buyer request process. The next time we'll be talking about this, about the residential text amendments as well as the two residential by request properties. So thank you all so much for your time and patience as we worked through this process.
Okay, get back to work. FY twenty-two preliminary recommended C I P and bond authorization, we got Ted on.
Do we?
Ted's here.
There he is.
Deb and Ted, I see, Miss, I think, yeah, right, Ghost Dealer, I mean Ravens, go ahead, Ted.
How can you wear that that lanyard?
It's minor league football, it's minor league football appreciation day, Steelers, go ahead.
Remembering Better Day. All right. Preliminary recommended C I P first. Oh, and. Well, we'll get that. Go ahead to next two slides, done. So you've heard this before, just a reminder, what what's going on here and for anybody who might be watching. You know, what is the preliminary recommended C I P? This is the first look, this is the beginning of your capital process. Vesskly feasible. This is a little bit challenging right now, our idea is to tell you, here is a plan you can do within the money we think is going to be available. But as you know, we have a lot of uncertainty right now, so we're saying with what we think we know right now, but things could still change on us. Uh, consistent with Commissioner goals, our intent is to bring you something that we believe lines up with what you're trying to do, what direction we have. Of course, there are always, until we get further into the process, questions about that as well. A continuation of existing plans, we build a six-year plan every year, we don't start over from scratch. A lot, most of what we do carries forward into the next year, we change the things that need to be changed. And this is a starting point for Commissioner discussion and decisions. What is the preliminary recommended C I P, not basically the flip side of everything I just said, it is not the final C I P. It is not the end of analysis, we will continue to work on some projects. And it's not yet a commitment to project funding, timing or a revenue mix. Now, it's not yet a commitment, but we are indicating that. Now, it's not yet a commitment, but we are indicating that this is where we think we are going, at least in a general way. Three big ideas for you. The CIP is largely dedicated to the maintenance of existing infrastructure. Most of what's in here is about taking care of the things we already have. We have to be very careful about adding projects that come with increased ongoing costs. We're in a challenging fiscal situation. We don't have room to be adding things. And it's easy to forget that when we take on a capital project, often that also means an ongoing commitment. And if, as we deal with our fiscal situation, we want to try to decrease capital spending, funding as part of a um solution. Just important to know, there aren't a lot of options here. We're not doing that much. And as I said earlier, almost all of it is is just taking care of things we already have. Okay, take a look at the capital fund. Uh, the capital fund is your capital program, but not with your enterprise funds. Now, here's a chart that shows you a history of funding. The red is things that have already happened. The blue is projected based on this preliminary recommended CIP. You can see we've uh come down a lot from the level of funding we once had. Goes up and down depending on projects, capital budget tends to be kind of lumpy because of the size of some projects. Just want you to see this. If we adjust for inflation, I think this is a very interesting picture. Well, I told you we're down from what we used to fund a decade or so ago. When you look at it in terms of how much we can accomplish with those those dollars. Uh, we are significantly down from what we used to do and on a generally declining line. This has uh, you know, long-term implications for us. Okay, outstanding bonding bonded debt. Just want to show you that from fiscal year eleven, which uh was the the height of our outstanding debt to today. Uh, we have dropped significantly by more than twenty-seven percent from where we once were. If we look ahead. We are starting to take on more debt again. You have some big projects, East Middle School, Career and Tech, State's Attorneys, Headquarters. So we're starting to move up again. But I want to take you out all the way out to fiscal year twenty-seven and point out to you that I, with fiscal year eleven as a starting point, sixteen years later, our expectation is your outstanding debt will not have grown. That is still a pretty remarkable thing to to think about. Uh, you have a big county to run. The cost of doing these things continues to go up. And you will have gone sixteen years without an increase in outstanding debt. Unsold bond balance. This is always confusing. I wouldn't let you, I wouldn't worry too much about it. I just do this so that you at least have been told where we stand. We sell our bonds as the time comes to spend the money. So sometimes we're sitting on bonds that we could be using and not moving ahead with them yet. So if we look at the entire county, including Board of Education, there's a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars that haven't been sold yet. Forty-three of those, we expect will be sold in twenty-two. Another sixty-six will be sold in twenty-three through twenty-seven as projects uh move along. And as we stand right now, there's seventeen and a half million dollars where we have no plans to sell. So I think the big story here is almost all of this has plans to move on. We just haven't gotten there yet. Now the seventeen and a half that have have no plans, five and a half are connected to water development programs. Uh, right now, we are, we are not doing anything. This is about finding water. NPDS, there's five million dollars. Land Bank, this is money we have set aside in case an opportunity to acquire land that we need comes up. And Government Complex, yeah, this is over um the other side of um the District Court from us. Uh, and we've accumulated for future needs. Uh, none of these are built into our plans right now. Debt services built into our plans. Occasionally, something will come up with one of these and then we'll have to change that. Okay, so what's in the preliminary recommended CIP? First, the two of you that in the building, I think you have your hard copies. Uh, Deb emailed everybody an electronic copy. Uh, I just want to touch on a few pages in that book. Whether you have your book or not. We can show you and you'll recognize if you go looking later. Okay, Deb is pulling this up. We'll be with you in just a second.
Okay, just share with us what page you are looking at because Commissioner Fraser and I do have the books in front of us.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do. Uh, so Deb's gonna pull it up so the others can see it on the screen. They'll always be behind us, but. Okay, here we go. So page seven is quick guide to twenty-two through twenty-seven CIP. Uh, if you just want to look at three, three pages that say what's in here, this is where you'd want to go. On page thirteen, we start a bunch of summaries of the various areas of the CIP. If you just want to see the numbers, see what it looks like, adopted, recommended, prior adopted, this is where you'd want to go. Page thirty-five starts a series of summaries, both of revenues and expenditures. Where's the money coming from? Where's the money going? Page forty-five, if you just want to see a quick summary of what's happening in fiscal year twenty-two, this will give that to you. And then on page forty-nine starts a series of six-year summaries of each area of the capital budget. So somewhere in all those pages, if you want to just see big picture kind of things, that's where you can find your information. Okay, now we're gonna go back to the presentation. Deb is so slow. You know, it's hard getting good help now.
You're really saying that with the Steelers lanyard around your neck? Wow.
Okay, here we go. Yep. Page thirteen. Okay. So talking in a kind of general way about what's in the preliminary recommended CIP. I I mentioned this maintaining infrastructure. Uh, we have maintaining efforts in ag pres and water quality. We have the last state funding for the Public Safety Training Center. Uh, this is a new project that's been thrust on us, Public Safety Microwave Network Replacement. Uh, we found out recently that Motorola will no longer be supporting an important component of our system. And we're gonna have to replace it. We don't have hard numbers on this yet, but we might be looking at something like three million dollars. We have Career and Tech Project, the East Middle School Project, a Sheriff Precinct in Eldersburg, and a number of park projects. I talk about maintaining infrastructure, talking about roads and bridges, HVAC, roofs, paving, parks, technology, stormwater ponds, all the stuff we own and need to keep renewing. And I want to go back to an idea I mentioned earlier. We talk about maintaining our infrastructure. We have to maintain what we already have. And every time we add something, we also added something that needs to be renewed over time. And I want to go back to that idea. We need, we should be thinking very hard when we're looking at adding to our infrastructure. Every time I take on a road, every time we take on a building, every time we take on a park. We take on costs of maintaining those things and future costs of renewing those. Also in maintaining infrastructure, our water and sewer systems, our schools. We have forty schools in our system. Maintaining effort, agricultural land preservation and water quality. Board of Education projects, we have Career and Tech, East Middle School, some paving projects and technology replacement project. Things that are new to twenty-two through twenty-seven. Farm Museum Pavilion Replacement. This is the project, you might remember last year, uh, Jack Liburn came to you to say he had alternate ways of accomplishing this other than through the CIP project that was in. Uh, it doesn't look like that is happening, so this is back in the CIP again. The Microwave Network Replacement I just mentioned to you. Gillis Falls Trail Phase Two and a master plan for the Northwest Area Regional Park. Uh, two changes from the adopted CIP. Uh, these are projects that were in and no longer in, a waterless restroom at Cape Horn Park and additional lighting at the Sports Complex. These changes are both in reaction to changes in how much program open space funding was available. Uh, some, some projects that were in and remain in, but have changed uh in how much they're gonna cost are most recent estimates. Courthouse Annex renovation, the Sheriff's Eldersburg Precinct. Both of those uh are now noticeably more expensive than they were in our last iteration. And Public School Safety Regional Water Supply, we're moving to funding that every other year instead of every year. Uh, two reasons for that, we've accumulated a balance. And the other is uh we have an open position and one of the functions of that position was working to find and make happen the uh locations for these um water supplies. So what's not in the preliminary, and this is always a longer list than the things I'm talking about that went went in. Uh, we get requests for much more than we have any ability to fund. Uh, in schools, William Winchester Elementary School Modernization and a list of others. That one is the one at the top of the list right now. Four kindergarten additions. This goes all the way back to when the state mandated full-day kindergarten. We built a number of additions. These four uh didn't get built and there's still no plans. Uh, best program at water, Robert Moten and barrier-free modifications. They have an existing balance there. Uh, still not in for schools, HVAC replacements at Oklahoma Road Metal, Spring Garden Elementary. And this is a big change. Uh, in the past, we've had an ongoing stream of funding for HVAC improvements and replacements. They go in unidentified and as we get closer to the time, it would move to specific projects. These are not in now because we believe we've maxed out state funding for the years ahead of us for a while for Career and Tech and East Middle School. Without um additional state funding, uh, there's there, there is no state funding for eight systemic projects. The only way we could move ahead would be if the Commissioners committed to fully funding, and I'm not recommending this, to fully funding those projects.
Uh, and Linda, Ted, you made that abundantly clear to them when they moved to the East Middle that there wasn't gonna be funding for these type things. Did it sink in, I guess is what I'm asking?
Uh, yes, I I believe they understand. It doesn't mean it won't come up, though.
Okay.
Then there's a roof replacement for North Carol Middle School that is not in. And then just like the HVAC, in other times, there would be a a stream of revenue for replacing roofs. Uh, that also is not in, same same line of logic. And um one thing that's unfortunate about how this is playing out, we were making really good progress on on roofs. We had a big bubble of of roofs that needed to be replaced and we were closing in on on getting past that. So we still made a lot of progress, but we're not gonna be able to get quite as far in these next six years as it looked like a couple of years ago. School not in for schools, security improvements, window replacements at South Carroll and Westminster High Schools. In our roads program, things that are not in, roundabout at Angler Road, Georgetown Boulevard Extension, Monroe Avenue Extension, Ride Now Way and sidewalks at Freedom Avenue and Johnsville Road and Karen Drive. Recreation, I mentioned the waterless restroom at Cape Horn that came out of the plan. There's a request for one at Sandy Mount that is not in. Uh, sports complex dugout improvements and new sports complex lighting are not in. Uh, at Burke, request for central air and an elevator are not part of the plan. The Community College, the request for the sports complex, additional technology funding, parking garage are not in. Now there are maintenance facility, a request for basically an addition to that is is not in. Sorry. Oh, Deb said I missed something. Okay, Elections Office renovation, right. There is still discussion going on on that and whether that is desirable or necessary. Uh, sewer line to the Maintenance Center is not in and we we are fine with our septic system. It's not like we're ignoring a problem. Uh, expansion of Technology Services Office, a number of aging and senior center projects. The courts would like a replacement of their visitation center. We have some uh library projects. And actually to buildings and also for technology funding in the future. Uh, Detention Center Project is not included, changes to the existing chat, descent center are not included. Headquarters for the Sheriff and some other related projects for the Sheriff are are not included. And of course, that's not the whole list, but you can see even there, there was a lot more to talk about and they not included. Uh, the next slide just gives you a simple comparison of twenty-one and twenty-two and the twenty-one through twenty-six plan against the twenty-two through twenty-seven plan. These numbers will always bounce around, just depends on what projects we're taking on in a given year. And that was all capital without enterprise funds. Just want to touch briefly on the enterprise funds. I'm not gonna run through all the projects and utilities individually. Just know that in every year, we have projects, a constant effort to keep renewing that system. The, I guess the big thing to mention here is um the Sykesville Water and Sewer Upgrades. That's gonna be a a big project and of course disrupts a lot of things, so I'm sure you'll be hearing about that. Uh, Airport is a small ongoing project. Fiber network, we have some equipment replacement and solid waste. We have to make some some changes to the to the landfill to try and reduce uh the amount of leachate that we're creating. Then a similar chart with enterprise funds, it shows the the change from last time to to this time. Okay, sorry, Deb just told me I'm wrong again. The solid waste, a lot about leachate, uh, we we have to open up another area to start using again. Um, some things I think should be on your mind with school funding. Uh, there was capital funding attached to the Kerwin legislation, the operating legislation. Governor vetoed that. We expect that the legislature is gonna override that veto. Uh, this will lead to the Maryland Stadium Authority running kind of a parallel school construction program. It's gonna be interesting to see all how all that works. But one thing that concerns me when that veto happens. Uh, when the legislation passed. The state did not know how they were gonna pay for all that current legislation. Their situation today is worse than it was when they passed that legislation. It's not hard to imagine that they start to make changes to that legislation that will have some impact on us. What that would be, be totally speculative. We talked about the concern about systemic projects. I mentioned briefly that there is a line of modernizations waiting. Uh, redistricting always is a as a question and of course down in um Freedom, we have a very specific concern about Freedom Elementary School. Uh, this is something that's come up fairly recently that we have not dealt with in this plan yet. This is something that's come up fairly recently that we have not dealt with in this plan yet, but we, we are going, going to need to. And that is modifications we need to make to the dam at Pony Run. There's gonna be a very big question for the commissioners to wrestle with here, which will have significant financial implications. We're gonna need to decide if we want to modify the dam with an assumption that Pony Run will never be a source of water. Or we want to modify it with an assumption that it could be a source of water in the future. If we want it to be a source of water, the cost of this project will be much larger. And we don't have good numbers yet, but just to give you a, a sense of what I'm talking about, it could be a difference between a ten million dollar project and a thirty million dollar project. We will have some funding help from another agency here. This is not entirely on us, but there will be a significant cost to us. From time to time, I remind you that we need to remain concerned about infrastructure. We have been working for years now or an effort to understand what we have and what it takes to renew that over time. Our, our work there has slowed down. Other things have gotten in the way now with everything we've been dealing with this, this past year, but that doesn't mean the problem has gone away. We put a lot of money into renewing our infrastructure. I mentioned earlier. I don't think I said this number, but about seventy percent of this plan is about renewing infrastructure. And I think there's every reason to believe that we are not putting in as much as we really need to. And we're gonna have to deal with that sometime. I mentioned the detention, that there is no plan for new detention center. Someday, we are gonna have to, to deal with that. And I also want to remind you that in fiscal year twenty, decisions were made to reduce funding in the CIP to county systemics, roofs, roofs and HVACs to IT, infrastructure and to our road program. Those changes were strictly to try and balance the budget. It was not because we thought the need had gone down in any way. We are past some of those changes now, but in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, we, we still have reduced funding for systemics and IT and through twenty-two in roads. Oh, I'm sorry, through twenty-five, no, through twenty-three in roads. Okay, that was my kind of quick look at the preliminary recommended CIP. We will be going shortly to the planning commission to start the process of them saying that this is consistent with the master plan. I next need to go on to the bond authorization, but I'll stop here if there's anything that you have questions about or want to talk about.
Okay, let's keep going.
All right, bond authorization. Every year, we have to go to the General Assembly to get authority to issue bonds as part of funding our CIP. An important point, the capital budget that you adopt drives the bond authorization request. If we say we're gonna spend this money and that is how we're gonna do it, then we need to get the authority to have that much available to us. This sometimes comes up as a question later in the process. And if we don't want to take on debt, the time to make that decision is when you adopt your budget, not sometime after you've adopted your budget. Now, there's difficult timing here. We are just beginning here today to talk with you about the CIP, yet right now, we have to get a number to the General Assembly for the legislation. It'd be nice if it didn't work that way, but that's what we're stuck with. So we have to send them a number. That doesn't commit you to anything. It just gets us the authority and we'll talk a little bit more about that. A few definitions so that we're all talking the same way. Appropriations mean you've adopted a budget that sets revenues and expenditures, what you are legally able to do. Authorized means the General Assembly has told you, you have the authority to issue bonds up to a certain amount. Issued means we've actually sold them. This is when Rob comes to you to say, we're going to sell, going to sell our bonds today. And planned means we've built a CIP that says, here's what we expect to happen in the future. So important things to remember, you can have an appropriation without spending. You can have an authorization without an appropriation. And an authorization commits you to nothing. It just enables you to move forward. So for fiscal year twenty-two, based on this preliminary recommended CIP, we are suggesting that we ask for forty-eight point four or five million dollars of new bond authorization. Now, things could change as we go through the process. Projects may get added or dropped. They might change in scope or cost. One wild card for us is sometimes the fire companies will come to you to ask to be included in our bond, bond issue. So we don't know everything right now, but we have no reason to expect that this would change in any significant way. So we recommend the forty-eight point four five. Remind you again that this is only enabling, does not commit you to anything. Rest of the process in March will be coming to you with our overview and recommended budget. In April, agency hearings, and this is something that you probably are gonna want to talk about, given our situation. Do, do you want to have the hearings to have everybody come to you and tell you what they're looking for in the budget? The state's General Assembly session ends in the beginning, beginning of April. You'll release your proposed budget in April. Early May, we'll have a public hearing on the budget. In late May, you'll be set to adopt your budget. So the thing I need from you today is you're okay to send that forty-eight point five, four or five million dollar bond authorization request to the General Assembly.
And for clarification, Mr. Zalinski, why is it we gotta go hat in hand to the General Assembly for bonds?
Because we do not have our own authority.
Okay, any comments, discussion?
Hey Ted, remind me of what the request was last year. Not that that has any merit, but I'm curious. What was it last year? Do you remember Deb? It ballparked.
Yeah, I think it was in the thirty million area. Oh, look.
That's what I'm remembering, something along those lines. I guess my point is here, we're, we're, you know, we're asking for a little bit more of an increase, but in the grand scheme of things, not so sure that it's a it would be looked upon as a huge increase. And I don't think there's ever any questions down there anyway. They, this is just pretty much a right on through because, you know, this is one area where we know better than they do and they identify that. And I'll leave it at that.
It's the only area for that, but okay.
We're wishing, of course, that other areas were the same. Okay, thank you.
Deb just got the number thirty-eight point two five.
Yeah, okay, so it was close to forty. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I make the motion to board of county commissioners to approve the bond authorization to forty-eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to FY twenty-two.
I'll second that knowing we do not have to spend it. It's only a request.
It, it's the authorization piece of this, correct? Okay, got a motion. We have a second of forty-eight point four five million dollars. Go down to the General Assembly for approval. Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you so much, Ted and Deb. Good presentation.
Will we get quizzed on this later?
I'll put something down.
Quizzed.
No. No.
Yeah, it's called, it's called a two-month quiz, Eric.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, do we have anybody online for open?
Does not appear to.
It does not appear to. Okay, administrative, anything for open admin? I know there is a letter that has been drafted and is going to the five of us with the intent of going to our governor. We will discuss that further. I think done closed maybe and then get a letter out appropriate. And what else? Anything else? Open admin. Roberta, no? Okay. Let me go through the agendas and then we're gonna go into closed and then open at thirteen, at one P M or thirteen hundred. So let's see. Starting on the eighteenth, we will be closed in observation of Martin Luther King Junior Day on Tuesday, the nineteenth. Myself and Commissioner Weaver will be participating in a virtual meeting with the Veterans Independence Project Meeting, which is Ed Kramer and Frank Valenti and our team. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission where Commissioner Boucher will be attending at nine o'clock. And then the Veterans Advisory Council, again, Commissioner Weaver and I will be attending that at two P M. On Wednesday, Mako Legislative Committee Meeting, Commissioner Frazier and Lance will be attending. Now, Thursday, the twenty-first, we have open session.
The time, just for the record, the time on Mako has been changed because of the bulk of bills and because that happens to be inauguration day. So I, that, that has been changed and pushed to nine thirty A M.
Okay. Thank you. Thursday, open session. We will continue with our administrative piece and then also having our health department and Mike Fowler, is he gonna do every other week? Is that the intent? Or every week? Every week, so it's not on here, but he will be attending as well. And then we will have a briefing on Manchester Annexation of Patriots Overlook. We will talk about a text, a potential text amendment in Finsburg. We will have a request for pre-approval of the FY twenty-two annual transportation plan and public hearing notice. Request a grant application, acceptance of a ward of Hampton Valley watershed restoration. And then at one P M, we will have a joint meeting with the Board of Education. A draft agenda is been provided, I know, to us for our review and then we'll get it out to the public once it's accepted. Nothing scheduled on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Very looking forward to Commissioner Frazier's podcast that he will present.
Way to end the week, is what I have to say.
Some people say Sunday is the beginning, but that's right. So anyway, Monday, the twenty-fifth, we have nothing.
Start the week.
Until rudely interrupted, I'll keep going. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, we have the Board of County Commissioners, we have a closed admin session at one P M. And then at four P M is C C E A. Really, annual local lobby night virtual meetings and Commissioners Boucher, Weaver and Frazier are attending that. Enjoy, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Invitation. I'm not listed on, I accepted it.
Yeah, I thought it was all of us. I thought, isn't this where they're coming to us?
Yes.
There are like two of them coming to us and have a meeting.
Except this will be virtual, but yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. So it'll be at four P M on Tuesday. Wednesday, Aging and Disabilities Meeting, Commissioner Vance will be attending that. Mako, huh, Mako Legislative Committee, again, Commissioner Frazier and Lance, scheduled at ten thirty on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. On Thursday, Board of, we have our open session. We will be again talking about the Manchester Annexation Patriots Overlook and possibly making a decision, I believe, on that. We will request an approval, or excuse me, we will discuss and then potentially go to a public hearing on proposed amendments of our chapter thirty-four ethics. There's gonna be a whole lot more, I expect, on that morning. And then one P M, we do have open session with the Environmental Advisory Council scheduled right now and we'll see what else is added on that. The rest of the week, we have nothing and Sunday, we have the podcast with Commissioner Boucher speaking. Okay, is there anything else that I either glossed over or missed? Seeing, hearing none, I believe we need a motion to recess until one P M? Will that work?
Motion to recess to one P M.
Okay, I got two motions. Do I have a second?
Second Weaver's motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And then we'll stay fast forward closed. Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous. Let's now end today's session and there, one P M, we will go back into open.
Thirteen hundred.
At thirteen hundred, correct.